Hi, next.
Hi. Good evening, City Council. So, the first thing I want to go over tonight, you have in front of you is the July dashboard. Just want to take a couple of minutes to review some of the highlights on there. Sales tax revenue continues to grow strong, going through seven months of the year, or about seventy thousand dollars more than we were at this time last year. We do know we have a school being built over on the north side, so that will help that number probably stay pretty strong. And all indicators show that we should finish about 3.4 million. We're originally budgeted about 3 million this year. The current revenue for general fund industry exceeds the expenditures, but we do have a couple of large projects that are actually coming up tonight for consideration, that are included in the 2013 budget, that being the Trailhead Irrigation project and then the Heights, Phase Two and Three of the Heights. So those are two items. You know, it seems like we're ahead of the game. Those two items would kind of flip that axis. But we've budgeted for them, and we project that we will still be healthy cash balances at the end of the year. On the backside, on the same projects over a half a million, one point out, that's where we're tracking, the Trailhead Irrigation, the Orchard Park, based on, right now, the budget says three million, but there's the second, I've got two budget amendments going. There's one that includes Orchard Park making that about almost 3.6 million, because that will include change order number two into this project, so that number would grow. And then, the Harvard Road Bridge design, I want to make sure that doesn't get confused with what's also on the agenda tonight under KPFF, and the Washed Out, which is a Harvard Road widening. Those are actually two separate projects. So the 725 identifies the Harvard Road redecking of the bridge, which was to do the payment service on top of that. And we're not continually moving forward, I think, at this time this year for that project, the widening within its own fund, you know, different project.
So, you're talking about the decking on the Harvard Bridge before the redo?
Yeah. If I could answer the question. We also have someone from Huppins here that's helping us with some sound, so the red dot, does that mean I'm coming through the microphone?
When is yours?
Yes, A six. You have someone here to help us with sound.
Green dot.
So, last year at this time, Harvard Road Bridge looked different than it does today from a city's design perspective. We were going to redeck it and apply for TIB funds, and then we're going to finish the design so we can apply for TIB funds. What changed is when Washed Out came to you guys in February and showed that they would pay for the design. So that is the design of the widening that RJ just talked about. I don't believe, the decking was going to be, Dennis, do you know the exact amount of the decking project?
Um, I don't.
Yeah, this, the 725, 550, that was KPFF's design contract for the bridge.
For the decking?
No, for the widening. That was their design fee for the widening, I believe.
That's not that, because my budget notes say that was to look at, this is from last year budget, we did decking at 725, saving up at 600 for these two projects.
Yeah, so it says Harvard Road Bridge Design, it doesn't say decking, and so, anyway, the long and the short of it is, the project that we are working on is not the project that's before you tonight, other than the funding has changed, because DOT has committed eight hundred thousand dollars to the design effort, or thus picking up the balance.
Okay.
Is that, we were going to redeck it, I believe that redecking was in that fifty thousand dollar range, but we never moved forward. Probably one is Andrew was no longer with us, and the other is we're going to hold off until we get the widening project done.
Okay, so the answer is, no, we're not going to redeck it until it's been done.
That's correct.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I say one, then choose to be four, because we are wanting to establish a new fund for the eight hundred thousand dollars we've been paying. And actually, is there any other, are there any questions regarding the July? Yeah, so revenue's kind of been strong.
You mentioned the Phase Two, or a second quarter on Portraits?
Change order number.
Change order number two, what is that?
Change order number two was to do all, turn around the exits, the move the slide.
We increased the scope, we did not include the slide hill, but we added in the rest of the playground structures, and not, it doesn't include the pavilion, but we added back in scope that we had not originally wanted.
Thank you.
The second item we have in front of you is a little spreadsheet, so the budget calendar for 2019, so that is to try to let you know where we're at regarding this process. We've been working, our staff has been working towards the budget, there have been meeting regarding the CFP and CIP, and having our strategic planning meetings, so that whole process will be incorporated in this 19 budget. Some important dates to remember is October 16th is when we're anticipating the, well, that's when the mayor's budget will be released, so we should be mid-October for that. In November, we'll have the public hearings on the budget, we'll also have the setting of the property tax levy that happens in November, and December would be passing 2.00. So this works as a guide to let you know where we're at, what key situations are coming into play. So we'll have major budget, mayor budget questions for all of you to have there by that mid-October as well.
I have a question. I was going to bring this up later, but might as well do it now. You know, we have spent hundreds of man-hours working on the strategic plan for the city, and I notice on the agenda items for the future, there's nothing on there about the strategic plan. It seems to me that the budget should be based on the strategic plan that we're going to approve and adopt for the city. And if it's not going to be, then we waste a lot of time and effort, so.
Our, that would happen, that is our expectation that it's going to happen, that those two will be joining each other. So whilst we're going through this 2019 budget process, there will be a strategic plan and a CFP for you to get.
So, when is the strategic plan going to be on the agenda for completion and adoption and confirmation?
So, a couple of things I'll mention, and Lisa can help me out. So, one is that we are going to use the prioritization matrix for the transportation parks, capital facilities, all that is going to help us put together the budget for 2019. I believe Lisa's going to bring back an RFQ for the design of the graphics on the 21st.
Yes, so we have an RFP out right now for the graphic design. It's due back on the 17th. I'd be able to report to you on the 21st what the status and timeline is for the graphic design strategic plan. I am thinking right now, I'm hoping that it won't take very long to do that, once we have the graphic design, the mayor has indicated to me that he wants to make sure that we vetted it with the public first, which I would assume would be the better part of September, and that we'd be actually able to put it open for adoption in early October. So I think the timing works. We are using the strategic plan and the prioritization that you've gone through and developed in the capital facilities plan. So the capital facilities plan, if you remember, I shared with you the schedule for that last time, that's actually going to kind of jump ahead a little bit of the strategic plan itself, just because it's timely for us to get that done as part of the budget, but they'll be pretty close neck and neck, and we may in fact end up coming forward at the same council.
My point is, I think that the budget should be based upon the strategic plan, and not based upon some other criteria.
And that's the process that we're using, so.
Very good, thank you.
I have a few questions. No, so we'll be appropriate while you're speaking, thank you. All right, cool. Anything else I can?
So, Kate mentioned we have Steve from Huppins here tonight to kind of help with our sound on the mics. So, we, when we had the room all set up a couple of weeks ago, before everyone got here, everything sounded good, and when people showed up, things didn't go as well. We tried to play the video on screen for you to listen to, but I had to turn the system down so far that I couldn't get a high enough to be able to hear. It doesn't work. We do have audio on there, so Steve can help us troubleshoot to see if we're, or we can do better in mass. We do have another TV to put in there, so that this side of the room can see, we have four TVs in the room.
And that's what size that will be?
Should be that size there. You want bigger?
We can do bigger.
They want a problem, aren't they?
It's a tiny thing. Okay, come on. We love the bigger.
And then, we're also working on the video camera, so we'll have some update for the next meeting for the camera to go here, so we can stream live. That will be our end, that's our end game, is to be able to broadcast this, we'll do it on YouTube, that's what we tried last year, that's what we're looking to go. You've mentioned Zoom, and we're looking at that as well.
It's a very popular one for a lot of companies. You know, I use it, we use it, use it a lot. It's very popular, right? To be able to give it out to the people, and they can see where they're going, here moving.
Our goal to get, we're going to have it up here, and then wherever we want to send it, that's where we can, we can work on that. So YouTube's what we did in the past, but also we'll take up other options, we have updated them. And then, I talked with Craig recently too, so one of the things we want to do, when we feel like we've got it, we'll dial in, and what we're doing is he can do it, doesn't matter if it goes splash, so people know that we're, that we're able to expand our influence into, onto the internet. The other thing, when I created on the article, that I created last month on utility tax rebate, we've got a lot of feedback on that. Not all positive, but we've got a lot, but we'll do a full report next spring to make sure that people realize that it's available and up there. Two other items, so our big, we sent out a request for both of the bank services, we got three back, we're evaluating those this week, so we anticipate on the 21st to bring back an agreement for one of the banks up there, so we're reviewing two of them this week, to kind of see how they are service-wise, and see if they can back up what they're promising.
Who are the respondents on the bank services business?
What?
Who are the respondents on the bank services business?
US Bank, who are currently with? Banner and Washington Trust.
What are some of the criteria you're going for when you're trying to sell between three banks?
We look at our customer analysis, it's one of the biggest ones, just to see what we can do with processing fees, where these are going to be at. They have to have a presence within the city of delivery line, so that's required, we're looking at. We're looking stronger at the credit card process, both our internal credit cards, but also taking credit cards in discount, that's what they can do for service related, we use a thing called merchant, merchant right now with US Bank, and it works, but it's a little problem, so we'd like to see that improve. I've indicated in there too, is a little bit more help, maybe kind of even investing area as well, and so some more ideas on that, and I haven't got a lot of feedback from US Bank in the past from that.
Very cool, thank you.
But the apples, the apples comparison, the client analysis, I'm looking at that from the budget. And finally, so Youth Commission, they are putting on talent show for August 24, so they've been sending out flyers and trying to get word out for that, or let you know how that goes. Any questions on that?
So, I just pitched that the Youth Commission needs some help, because they got like three people signed up, so please get one, get the word out, it's a good event, get out there and do it, so.
RJ, are they looking for judges, are they chance?
They have an idea who they want to get for judges, they've been, so one of the things they've been working is talking to some of the businesses, to not have their sponsorship, but the businesses to be judges. Their back pocket is elected official, police chief maybe, I don't know.
RJ, question for you. The camera referred you back here, is that in the original budget?
Into this? It's part of the package, yeah. It's included in the budget, yeah, because not Huppins is not going to take care of that, it's going to be a budget.
RJ, I'd just like to piggyback just for a second, what Councilman Moore has talked about with our proposed capital projects, et cetera. You know, I don't want to see the final draft the same time and the same night I see the budget, okay? Just telling you upfront, all right? We've worked on it, worked on it, worked on it. I want to see the final draft weeks ahead of a decision that needs to be made, so we can review it again, and then we'll make the final edits to it, okay? So, just in case he wasn't 100% clear, let's make sure that we have plenty of notice please, because we really are interested in that document. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I just had one other comment. I don't know, probably covering this a little later on, on the Highlands overlay, but I don't quite understand, when I look at the transportation improvement plan, and I look at the allocation of 2018 for street preservation, the amount was three hundred thousand dollars. And I think on the agenda tonight, it's for what, 425, 480,000 dollars. What is the difference, and why is it more than the transportation improvement plan?
Dennis.
Dennis, I can answer. Is my mic on?
Yeah, sure.
I think it's on now. So it's a great question, because originally, when Andrew put together our local access overlay program, I'm just going to hold it up, but basically what it did, Councilmember Moore took our city and broke it into zones based on the age of the development. This particular zone is called Zone A, and it was originally built in 1975, and he's basically taken all of our local streets and our materials and identified them in our overlay program. Then we did the Heights last year, which was, we broke it into thirds, so we did one-third last year, and then he put, Andrew put into the budget to do the next third, and then the idea was we would do the last third next year. There was to be economies of scale by bringing them together, because by the time you hire the engineer and you mobilize on these smaller overlay projects, a lot of your efficiency is gone, because you're putting more money into the engineering, the staff costs, and the mobilization of a contractor. Also, you don't get, the project is small, so you don't get as much interest, so your bids tend to be less competitive. So for that reason, when Andrew was still here, we talked about combining it, and so we asked, let me think, it was Parametrics, to put both sections together. That was going to be three hundred thousand dollars for both sections, because last year we did 150, 150, so he had put 300 in for the remaining portion. So, I know that's a lot of information, but basically where we are today is, there is escalating costs associated with this. We knew that when we went out to bid, that the bids were going to be higher than our budget, and so we opened the bids, we got two good contractors competitively to bid it, and that's the contract that you have on tonight. So, to answer your question, packaging them together was in the original thought, but that we didn't, Andrew had estimated 300,000, and it came in just under 500,000, and there's economies of scale. Having said that, when you look at our overlay program, it is kind of that continual investment year in, year out, of fixing our roads on a routine basis, so that we don't get behind the eight ball and have to do total rebuilds and those kinds of things. So that, that's kind of the background of how you ended up with a contract for today. As far as the funding of that, RJ, can you help us identify how the funds are, where the funds are going to come from for this overlay project?
It gets paid for out of the utility tax. And that's the primary funding source to support it. We also have additional funds coming from the general fund, that'll also pay for that Heights overlay as well.
Is there any particular reason, RJ, or Katie, that a councilman has to ask why these numbers have changed, instead of the numbers being brought to us on a much earlier scale when it's first noted and explained? Why do we get down to the night that we're ready to vote on it to hear an explanation, and the only reason we hear it is because a councilman asked? Why haven't we heard about this increase in the economy of scale, and what you all decided to do? We don't know anything about that.
I think in the six-year plan, we should have it at 530,000.
Six-year plan's great, that has nothing to do with what we're doing tonight. Secondly, this is a repair that we keep doing. There's nothing on the section A, or whatever you call it, that needs to be repaired, so why is it being included as a repair? I noticed that you, you know, I don't understand that, but that's a different question that we'll pick up after real.
Yeah, so repairs, I mean, not going in July, so when you have potholes and a failed section, you go in, you dig out the failed section, you fill the pothole, or you fix the repair. This is a preservation project, it's been in the queue for years, not that that justifies it. So let me back up as to why this is, and I try to remember, Councilman Langford, to be honest with you, I don't remember, so let me just be honest with you. We knew that our bid in our budget was low. We knew it probably in, I would say, March, when Parametrics came back to us and said, we're putting together your bid documents, we're giving you the engineer's estimate, and we're telling you it's not going to be 300,000. So we've known since March that this was going to be over our budget. Did we not bring that back to you and tell you? I don't, I don't know if we did or didn't, so we should have. So during these workshops, we should have told you, our estimate is showing that the bids we're going to get are going to be exceeding our budget. That's part one. So then we talked to our engineer, Parametrics, and we tried to provide as much flexibility as we could on this project to keep the cost down, because the last thing you want to do is put out a bid on asphalt in August. It's, you're insane to do that. In the city of Spokane, in the county of Spokane, you bid your asphalt work in the fall and in the winter. I'll be honest with you, the project didn't get out in that timeframe, for a variety of reasons, which I'm not going to go into. Having said that, we built flexibility into this bid, and we told contractors, give us your best price, and we don't care if you do it this year, or you do it next year. We're going to allow you to mobilize and complete this work within a, I don't know, 18-month window approximately, wasn't it? We asked that they would be done by August of 2019.
And that's, that's part of my point, not to belittle, okay, and I'm not trying to jump anybody's cornflakes, but all this "we" talking to the council, to the professionals, and we're telling them what we're going to bid, and what we're going to pay, and how, we don't care if they get it done now, we don't care, this is the body that cares, okay? We decide if there's a change, whether or not we want to go forward with the bid. Obviously, we don't have a mechanism in place for good communication telling us, this is going to be a change, do you want to, you want to consider it and continue with it? Because it may have been totally different than what has come out for tonight. I don't know, we may be 100% behind it, but I'm just saying, again, it's the communication, it's the ability for the council to be briefed at the front end, not on the back end, to have the option of saying, do you have input on this? Because this is what we think's going to happen, okay? And yeah, it takes a little effort, but my opinion is that things would go smoothly.
So when we put together the budget last year, and the budget that was approved, this project, both phases were included in it.
That's great, that was a year ago, okay? Things change, all right? And you're well aware of things changing all the time when it comes to our budget. So just because it was set aside X number of months ago, doesn't mean that it's still viable today. And just because the money's sitting there, doesn't mean it has to be spent, okay? So all I'm asking for is a little consideration, a little prior notice, the ability to weigh in and say, we're on board or we're not. That's all.
RJ, how much is coming from general fund?
I think you had number afterwards.
Do you have ballpark, 25%, 30%?
We had about 33%. Yeah, it's going to be 258,200,000.
So this is a strategic plan, a couple of those.
Anything else?
This was one portion, one-third, two-thirds was decided to vote, so one-third versus two-thirds.
Any other comments on this, Dan?
Sorry?
Any other comments on this?
Well, it looks like you.
Okay, library.
Hi, I've got another great PowerPoint show for you. Okay, our summer reading program this year has done fabulously. It's the best year that we've ever had, both in terms of registration of kids for the reading program, and attendance for the various events that we have had. So you can see a little chart up there, so I went back to 2014 to give you a five-year look at what's going, what has happened in only June and July. So I took out the August figures of all of those years, and just compared June and July. So you can see that back in 2014, we did really, really well that year, and then the next year, not so well, and then the year after that, wow, we were kind of, kind of dumpster, what happened? And then the next year, we tried something a little different, got a little bit better, and then this year, it just skyrocketed. So, up to 819 kids were registered for the program. One of the things that we think helped that was because the, back in those two low years of 400s, we went to a computer-based registration system, thinking, oh boy, we will be real up to date, and do everything by the computer, and that kids would really be excited about using the computer to keep track of their reading, and we found out they weren't. So this year, we went back to giving them a choice, they could still use the computer and register and keep track of their books that way, or they could do the old-fashioned paper, we're filling in the blanks, and so overwhelmingly, that's what was chosen. And so as you can see, we had a huge increase in the number of kids that were involved in the program. Also see the same sort of results in attendance, again, this is just June and July of each of those years, and a pretty, it more or less tracks, but a couple anomalies there with attendance. And of course, you can see that this year, attendance was over 1,500, and we're not, and we're not done. So, we don't have as much going on in August, but the number will increase, and so we are very, very pleased. We'll be taking a look at what we've done, and try to analyze that, and I can tell you for sure that we're going to have paper sign-ups and registration, for sure. Okay, next. Okay, some of the things that happened in July. We had the Untidy Toddlers again, which is always a big hit. For the first time this year, we had a show, a comedy and music show for kids, and that's the guy there with the barn in back of them, that's Red Yard Old Barn Show, and puppet shows, music and puppets, and the kids loved it. So we bought a couple of his CDs, and are going to promote them during the year, get him some more fans, and then have him back next year for even bigger gatherings. We started. We started, our chess club again in July. We had one a number of years ago, probably five years ago. Wasn't for lack of kids interested, but it was for lack of finding teachers who were interested in dealing with kids those age. We finally, in our own staff, discovered that two of them were very willing to do that, and so we started the chess club. And that will be going through this August as well, and we're looking at continuing it possibly through the school year, perhaps Friday nights after school goes out. The bottom middle is Escape, is the tape town, where tape is laid out on the floor, and little towns are created with shoeboxes. So, there's car washes in grocery stores and gas stores and things, and then little cars, and they take them along the tape and stop at the different stores and have little different activities. Very popular. Oh, another thing that we tried, another thing that we tried out first, for the first time, was an escape room. I don't know if you've ever been involved with that. Actually, in commercial escape, a ranger actually locked in a room. And they go, "Well, I think you're figuring it out." Of course, we did not lock anybody in a room, so it was just, but they were timed then. So, it was a Harry Potter-themed one. We started out with the idea that we were going to have three sessions of, where kids could come, three different days, where groups of eight would be able to come in. We had about six groups of eight each day. Well, it was so popular, and people begged and begged, and so we put, we had two more kids, and then the adults said, "Wait a minute, we want in on this too." And so, then we had two sessions for adults. So, it was extremely popular for kids and adults. Okay, a couple of months ago, I talked to you about the BISAC project that we're working on in the juvenile nonfiction, and I wanted you to take a look at what we've done so far. We took just animals, which are the 590s in the Dewey Decimal System, and we switched it to the BISAC project, the BISAC system of categorizing books. That big picture on the left there is looking down the aisle at the whole group of books of the 590s, and what that looks like on the shelf as a whole. And then the two ones on the side show you how we've changed the designation of the books and where they go. So, instead of having a Dewey Decimal number on them, they've got a subject. So, the top one is animals, and then the next line is fishes, and then the one in the middle there is animals on the first line, and the second line is insects and spiders. And so, all of those are in alphabetical order rather than in Dewey Decimal order. And then the books under each of those categories are arranged alphabetical by title. So, so far, it looks like we're getting a really good response from the community. Those books are circulating very, very well. Normally, they don't do so that so much during the summertime. So, we're very pleased with that and look to continue converting the juvenile nonfiction to that system. Okay, next. Okay, in the fall, looking forward, we are going to give some adulting 101 classes. So, these are for teenagers to learn about the basics of life. And you can see up there, how to change a tire, basic auto care, how to check your oil, how to make pizza, basic recipes, simple sewing, how to set up a bank account, how to do resumes, cover letters, and job etiquette. So, these will be a series of classes that we will be offering beginning in the fall for teenagers.
It's great to be able to pick up something schools don't do anymore. I just want to share that.
So, it'll be interesting. Of course, we'll be interested to see what the teens themselves want, so that could be a year-long program, but we'll just see. So, it was also suggested that it would be good for us to try Liberty Lake Reads again. We did this a number of years ago. I think the last time we did it, we were still back on Meadowood Lane. I think that book, we did the Marley and Me book, which eventually became a movie. So, this, we're going to try this again, Liberty, we're going to call it Liberty Lake Reads, and we're going to do the book, The Curious Charms of Arthur Peck. And if you have a chance to look at the newsletter that just came out this past week, you'll see, you'll be able to read all this a lot better. And we'll have more information for it at the end of August in the September newsletter, but we intend then to run it during the month of September. Yeah, that's, that's all, folks.
Yeah. Can you say something about Liberty Lake Wine Cellar?
Sure, we'd be glad to. The Friends of the Library have partnered with the Liberty Lake Wine Cellar for a fundraiser that will be August 15th at 6:00. And so, tickets are $20 apiece, and they can be bought at the library, and we hope everybody will come and enjoy it. Looks like it's going to be a great time.
I'd like to bring up, I can't at this point for the benefit of all of us here, I've been in contact with Friends of the Library, which in my case is Mrs. Kennedy. She requested that the council would allow them to be in our booth for the next two weekends selling tickets, so I don't think we're having to push back from that. But I wanted to be appropriate and bring it to our attention. You don't have any issue with that?
Sounds great.
Nope, sounds very good. Thanks for my household much happier. You're outside my castle.
So, if we have any questions about the presentation or about the monthly report?
Thank you, panel.
Yeah.
It is National Night Out. National Night Out is a crime prevention event that's going throughout the entire nation. Here at Liberty Lake, there are four different community events going on sponsoring National Night Out. So, our officer, the mayor, that's why he's not here right now, he's attending one of those. One of the events is at Tretina. The other event is at Spotted Owl, which is a multifamily housing complex. Third one is at Tango Woods, right over here. And the fourth one is on Desmond, over off country business. So, four events going on in our community, and what it's about is setting crime and going-away party, is the thing. And it's just an opportunity for you to get out, meet your neighbors, and get to know each other, and talk about some crime prevention efforts that can be in the community. So, that is tonight. It only runs from like 6:00 to 8:00, so fortunately, we probably will not be done for you to go out and meet some of the folks. Anyway, it's a great event that happens recently. Up on the board and on your desk, I've put up our July crime stats to look at. Really, I have notes here, is that 700 numbers are a number of calls for service that we responded to in the month of July. That is the highest number we've ever had in the District of Liberty Lake Police Department. So, July was feeling like, to all of us, the dance seems like it's busy this month, and then we started looking at these numbers, and now we know why. We usually average between 400 and 500 calls for service per month, and again, July was over 700. So, that's unusual for us, kept us busy. So, you see some of the other numbers there, you can look at those. I just do a lot on crime. One other thing is that on the citations, which are the traffic tickets, criminal citations written, there was 119 written in July, but that was based on over 226 traffic stops that were made. So, you can realize that there's only about 50% of people that we contact on those types of stops that are actually enforcement actions taken, as far as the ticket goes.
Were 80% of those during?
Probably, probably. And in the rest of the report, there's a couple of highlighted areas you can read about, basically involving some drug cases. One is a drug case that we did a search warrant on, seized some property, ended up with a quantity of different types of drugs, meth and heroin, based on a search warrant. The next one has to do with a theft that occurred at Home Depot. Vehicle, burning vehicle stopped in the valley, our officers responded there, seized the vehicle, gave them a search warrant, recovered more stolen property from the Home Depots, determined that the people involved in that theft were involved in multiple Home Depot thefts in our region, and then also wearing the search warrant, we've recovered more drugs, which seem to be a few lately. And the last piece of that is, so that you're aware, you might have been seeing it on Facebook, is we have reports of cougar sightings over lower part of Lake Ridge. Wildlife, fish and wildlife has been informed of that. They actually brought out a dog that specializes in tracking cougars. I was told by the captain of the Wildlife Department that the dog not indicates that there was no, during the tracking, did not indicate that there was a cougar in the area at the time of the track. So, just be cautious, because there's, they are out there. And so, if you do see, if there's a cougar sighting, card number is not to call me, but to call the Fish and Wildlife Department.
There's talks online, residents saying that if a cougar came onto their property, I think this is maybe something more correct to think about posting in the splash, or there are sheets of cougar. We've talked a little bit about there.
Yeah, just probably shouldn't do that.
That's why I brought it up.
Discharging firearms in the state of Liberty Lake is prohibited. So, unless it is an imminent threat to your family, you know, eminently going to attack you or a family member, if it just looks like a property does not give you the authority to shoot a cougar, so contact Fish and Wildlife. So, that's what I have for that part of the report. There's some pictures you want to scroll through, just to talk a little bit about our community outreach that we've done the month of July. So, as you know, a little bit involved in Special Olympics. I was able to attend the School Resource Officers Conference in Wenatchee, and made a presentation today about the Special Olympics and law enforcement torch run. And that picture is one of the Wenatchee athletes, and the big guy, there's Patrick Gilbert, he's a defensive tactics instructor with the City of Fife, and also involved in Special Olympics. I've got the next couple of pictures. Our department, mostly Shane, was involved in our, as a Barefoot in the Park event. So, we had a little booth set up, and we had our brand-new banner displayed proudly there. Shane was there all day, and it was well-received. The community really enjoyed it, great interaction with the community, and that was just one of our opportunities to be able to reach out. Two of our officers working that day also spent some time at the park, as time allowed. You can keep on scrolling through some of those pictures. That's also at Barefoot in the Park. That's a couple of our officers, Officer of the Park, Colthaus's two sons, that came out and enjoyed the festivities that day. Next couple of pictures is, July, we're involved in something called the Police Act Feathers League at the Hub, where our officers spent time with the youth in our community, involved in non-enforcement activities such as football, they did basketball, lots of sports at the Hub. So, that's Sergeant Morgan, I'm not sure if he's giving the ball kicked at him. It's obviously a kickball playing there. You can keep on. There's the group of kids, and all those in the blue shirts, I think, were law enforcement officers from Liberty Lake, from the valley, participated in that. There's some volleyball going on. They're talking with the kids. Next picture, it's just our crime map, right, camera hotspots, sideways, apologize for that. But just some of those red dots, just so you know, those are concentrated areas. So, I looked at those. The bigger ones are Pavilion Park. So, Pavilion Park is when our officers check out on a project, or they're walking through the park, checking on something there. That's a large number that you see there for the month of July. The other two are mostly related to traffic stop locations, because the stop location is necessarily where the infraction occurred, and it's where the person stops. And so, common places are along Liberty Lake Road, 1200, 1300, 1400 Block, Liberty Lake Road, or Harvard Mission is another popular place for those traffic stops. So, that's what all those bigger numbers indicate typically in that crime map. Last thing I really want to talk about as far as our community outreach and education that we did, Sunday is through our partners with the Fire Department. They sponsored something called the Isaac Foundation, which is to work with folks that are on autism spectrum disorder. And so, they had actually a training as part of that Isaac Foundation for first responders. So, our officers, Valley Fire was there, some others. But basically, what it says, it's important, I thought I'd just read you a little bit about the training that happened as part of Isaac Foundation that we participated in. So, it's a community-based first responder program. It's a multifaceted program that strives to do more than simply identify the inherent challenges first responders face when interacting with members of our community touched by autism and other special needs. Its objectives are to provide training for first responders on effective interaction techniques individuals touched by autism, provide parents with tangible solutions to 911 emergencies, and to help individuals with autism develop interaction skills that will learn in advance of a 911 encounter, help to improve the quality of care, and elicit positive outcomes between first responders and individuals touched by autism. So, we participated in that. We get to thank the Fire Department for including us in that, and it's very worthwhile for our officers to do that. Last thing that I have for the group is that we're working with Central Valley School District on school safety planning. Finally, after lots of conversation, they've agreed to provide us access to their camera systems at the elementary schools here. However, that does require a MOU to be entered into with Central Valley School District. It's long, it's six pages. I've given it to Sean to review before the council for final approval. No, there's no cost associated with it, it's more about why you can access the cameras, and then we need to document the reasons why we are accessing the cameras and apply that information to the school district. So, that should be coming forward to you in the future council meeting. With that, I'll ask your questions if you might have.
Hey, Brian, thanks for being persistent and proactive with the Central School District regarding camera set. I'm grateful for the interest in public safety, that's great. Hey, for the eight DUIs, were any of them on golf carts?
In July, I think we had three in July on golf carts, three of the...
That's just an important PSA for everybody, just because a golf cart does not mean it's okay to drink and drive.
Or bicycles.
Oh, my goodness.
Get them on a bicycle, too.
And then, just any responding on that MMA fight last week at the motorcycle shop?
I don't think we had any calls for service associated with that.
Chief, do you mind, Chief, do you mind taking just a minute, talking about future hiring of officers, and just kind of where you're at there, and we lost one, or maybe efforts that we need to go catch up, maybe, or can you just kind of talk about it for the next couple of years?
Sure. So, what is in the works right now is that we plan on going out for advertising for police officers in October. That gives us time between October and the end of the year to establish our eligibility list, with the goal in January of 2019 to hire the vacancy that we currently have and then a new position. So, that will give us a total of 13 patrol officers, or total police officers for 2019. And then, depending on, well, we're going to know about the School Resource Officer position, potentially with the middle school, and as the high school's being built out. And so, probably 2020, there will be a national security position for officers, one of those being the School Resource Officer position.
Keep in mind those, that 13 includes yourself.
Includes myself, the detective.
So, they're not allowed, I mean, they can't obviously go patrol, but... So, the second officer that you're looking at bringing on for this next year, are you thinking the front half of the week or second half of the week?
It will probably create a power shift position for that officer to fill in our busiest times.
Perfect. Chief, next you have.
Introduce myself, I'm Sean Erle, Spokane Valley Fire Department. I'm the Deputy Chief Operations. Chief Collins is at a conference this week down in Dallas, where it's, I heard it was over 100 all the time, and he is from the... I didn't know the protocol, I don't want to throw papers on your desk, but I did bring some materials, if that's okay, I can approach and pass those out real quick.
Thank you.
Two separate documents. So, they follow a little bit familiar. It's a concentration distribution map, very similar to what Chief has provided for law activity. Again, same kind of concept, larger dogs are more active, smaller dogs are typically a single event. In the area of Liberty Lake, yeah... In the, in the area of Liberty Lake, you have about 102 calls for service for the Fire Department in the month of July. Since then though, without our cancers in route, meaning they were initially dispatched, either they didn't involve themselves, somebody left, so we would make patient contact or any kind of wiring in there, basically things like that. Put down a couple of key calls that came out. Like everywhere else, you'll note on our second page list of activity, brush fires apply to a typical date for us to see activity from latent fireworks festering and pine needles stuff such as that. In this case, we had it over in the office upper road near RRB Park. And I think this one was campfire, if I'm not mistaken. And so we had a rapid response from DNR that helped us in that area and we brought in some airdrops and quickly extinguished that fire. There's also motor vehicle accidents, a couple of other brush fires, and probably on everybody's mind, we had the unfortunate neighborhood fire back on, what was it, July 29th? And that wasn't called in by a citizen. That was actually engine three was out in the area and saw a call and smoke, called it themselves, went in to investigate. And initially it was dispatched as a potential brush fire because we're all on heightened alert right now for that. In actuality, it was a house fire, so. Huge loss to one of our neighbors and the cause, the investigators found out the cause was improperly extinguished smoking material on the upper deck in the back. So we see this often in apartment complexes, so another note to the community and maybe we could follow it up to assist in an article in the splash would be how to properly take care of that. In this case, it was extinguished in a plastic coffee container. And on top of that, there's no water added to that. So what happens is that material get in there and it can sit and fester, if you will, for a couple of hours. And so that appears to be what caused this one. It's a tragic, if you've been by there or you're probably curious, probably went by there, it's a devastating loss. There it is, it's a total loss. So on the upside, our folks did a fantastic, you see how close the houses are on either side of that? The radiant heat off of a structure fire of that magnitude, when you have that much going, very challenging to prevent it from extending to other properties. So a good takeaway is that we were able to save the houses on either side. Burn ban's in effect, if you haven't heard. As a matter of fact, I think 96% of the state of Washington is under burn ban right now. Very active. I'm surprised I could be here this evening, so thanks for, one, thanks for letting me be here, but we have about a dozen people mowed at any time throughout the region and, and we're just happy that the activity around here hasn't had winds driving it. That's really a major factor for us, so. We also are looking for, I gotta do a little plug, we're looking for a fire commissioner, we have a vacancy, so if you know anyone that's interested, you can go to our website, SpokaneValleyFire.com, the application process is in there, so. I'll get off the little, the plug and then happy and entertaining questions.
I just wanted to comment, I had the opportunity to go up and see the house extinguished, you know, and within five feet of the, probably of the house, the next door neighbor's house had cut down some bushes, trees, so they're all dried out, didn't catch fire. And that's how efficient you guys were. I mean, you said you were efficient, but here you had this brush sitting right next to that fire within five, 10 feet. Perfect, so congratulations.
Thank you. I can't take, the crew did that work, but thank you all, that's not a long, thank you very much.
Anything else?
Thanks.
All right, let's take a break.
Father in heaven, we are grateful for this opportunity to come together as a community and as a group to talk about making this a better place. Inspire in us imagination and wisdom to do the right thing. Amen.
The pledge is to the fire of the United States of America, passed through the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty in every nation.
Mayor, no excuse, Mr. Christmas.
Second, a second of further discussion.
It's for families.
Further discussion, now here you all, say aye.
Aye.
On the list, you go.
Mayor, do the agenda for you.
Second. Second discussion. Here you all, say aye. Citizen comments. We got one comments.
Jimmy, Russian's good.
I thought there'd be ice water.
There is.
There is.
Right by the door.
Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Jenny Harner, 22855 East Spokane, Mr. Drive, number 438. I understand in March, a parking ordinance was passed and I understand that it has no teeth or muscle to it because it's not going to be enforced, that dispossessing greatly. And I want to know what is going to be done about it because I'm tired of seeing recreational vehicles, storage trailers, et cetera, parked in the residential area. If you're going to own it, provide your own storage or park it in your own driveway, not mine. So I'm, I'm wondering what the next plan of action is so we can get this taken care of. If you're looking for a part-time meter mate, here I am. At any rate, another question I have regarding that is on parking ordinances. I noticed that for over a week on Homestead, right there at the Villas, there was a vehicle parked right in front of the sign that says no parking, fire zone with chain going across the pathway. That leads me to believe that we don't get the street patrol because certainly in that length of time, the patrolman would have gone down by there and seen this violation. Since then, the car's been moved only probably because they saw me taking a picture and the license plate. Just saying. And I'm saying that if, I'm disappointed with the action that's going here and if I'm the voice of one, then I'm disappointed in our community.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
I'd like to come and sit down and say something.
I thought you were brave doing that.
So we did pass a, a new parking ordinance that talks about the storage of recreational vehicles trailers on city streets. So what she referred to is on Homestead. There is teeth to it because as you remember, we've removed several vehicles, both have been towed from that location. If you recall from my workshop discussion, we were busy and so it is not a number one priority for us, but when we do receive a complaint about a vehicle that's a violation of one of the parking ordinances, then we do take action on that. The action is that we tag the vehicle first to make notice. After that notice is given, then a citation is issued. If that does not resolve the issue, then the vehicle is towed. We've done that numerous times throughout the community. The vehicle parked in the, in the fire lane, again, that is, it is on dozens of condos. It was removed because that ended up being a stolen vehicle. So our officers did recover the stolen vehicle and returned it to the rightful owner. And so as our time allows, we do what we can to deal with those types of issues.
I did file a complaint over a month ago.
Okay, okay.
Chief will keep a sharp eye on those vehicles there, so I think more notices are going All right, any other citizen comments?
Can I turn it on?
Oh, did I miss one?
Yes, I did.
Come on, Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. So last council meeting, I did try to put out my objection, objection to the removal of minimum and maximum limit on lots sizes. Since then, the planning commission, oh, sorry, change my gender legacy. Since then, the planning commission did pass that as a resolution to come forward. I still am against that and I mentioned the fact that you were eliminating a minimum and maximum for all categories to enable some new type of structure, which I guess I wasn't told what it is. I'm curious to find out what that is and why we aren't just creating a new category in the code that says for this particular thing to set that exact. Maybe I'm being a little too literal in reading it, but if, if you eliminate the minimum and you specify with density, you put so many structures on a lot and then consume the rest of the sidewalk streets and so on, or park, whatever, so I prefer that that does not get passed. And while looking into that, I came across manufactured homes in Liberty Lake. It's not something I'm thinking fits with the mayor's statements, Spokane County's premier address. I went over and looked at the manufactured homes in east or west Liberty Lake off of mission. And what I found, I don't think I would be proud of, yards overgrown with weeds, yard waste piled more than three feet high, trash in multiple yards, car parts, junk, inoperable vehicles, and temporary metal structures that I would think would be more on farm in our community. So I'm not sure if our hands are tied that we have to have manufactured homes in residential one, two, and three, but if there's any way to either prevent that or have the neighborhoods move nicer, then we'll certainly have.
We should get that. I know the area where you're talking about, there's constant dentists, there are several occasions, trying to make sure that it gets cleaned up, so we inherited that in the incorporation seal. It predates the city law, the hemp structure, although we've been successful in removing a couple, two.
There's a couple areas over in that area, that he spoke of, that I have sent multiple letters to and sometimes they don't respond to them and there's no forwarding addresses. So it ends up being similar situation to the one where we knocked down the mobile home. It becomes a search, trying to figure out where the heck these people are. And once I could find out where they're at them, in one instance, I had the police officer go with me and hand deliver the citation. So if they don't want to respond when there's weeds and the vehicles in that one lot where there's, I mean, this is really pretty bad, they'll respond. And so then it becomes one of trying to figure out where they're at.
But we, we're trying to do as best we can. Excuse me. Hovering.
Could we go back to what structure we're trying to enable with this other elevation of the building?
So, um, the maximum and minimum. So there's a planning commission meeting tomorrow night and it starts at four o'clock. I encourage you to come because I don't, I think our planning commission will be voting on the amendment at that time. We said that.
That's actually not correct. They have already made the recommendation, they will just be ratifying the findings, conclusions, and recommendations that they will be making to City Council. They only make a recommendation, the final decision rests with City Council.
Of what structure are we enabling to be built by removing the minimum and maximum?
This was, this was a privately, this was a private request. This was not city initiated. I encourage you to ask that question pretty soon.
So when this topic did come up, I will let you know that there are a number of City Council members that raised concerns about that. So I imagine we'll have some good discussion when it comes to that.
So those structures seem good.
Man, since we're talking about the mission avenue areas and blocks, Sean, apparently when we sold that lot, it hadn't been put on sewer, right?
Correct.
So I assume that there's probably many areas back there that are not on public sewer. Is there, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so when the sewer, county sewer went in many years ago, all the homes that were on septic were converted to sewer. The home that we demolished was not because it was vacant and so they filed a lien. So that home, two things have to happen. When the lot gets sold and someone builds on it, they're going to have to decommission the septic tank and pay the capital facilities charge for the sewer connection. But everyone over there is already on a, there's no active septic tanks.
Thank you, that's where I was going. Appreciate it.
Any other comments? I hear you, we're going to go on to our local business spotlight, Courthouse. Ron Hunter.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the time tonight. My name's Ron Hunter, I'm the owner manager of the Courthouse. I took over when Katie Loss and Chris Pleasner bought the business on May 8th. And we've spent the last two and a half months trying to get it where they want it to be. They originally bought the restaurant because they liked it, they were friends with previous owners, they had a vision of what they wanted. They want it to be a spotlight for Liberty Lake, a spotlight for the area for people to come from or come to. The big vision is to take the four wine regions of the world and craft the wine list after that and craft the menu after that. That got put on hold a little bit as we've been having a revolving door in the kitchen as tends to happen when you take over a new business and you start putting in some different standards and stuff. I have myself 30 years restaurant management experience in the Spokane area and so I've got a lot of different standards than what they were used to. So I think we finally are done changing over the kitchen. I brought up John Spencer, who was my executive chef, I was with Gunsey for eight years, running all their food service. John was one of my executive chefs there, runs the party area and did all the hygiene catering, so he's got great experience, he's very excited about, about some of the stuff. Over the next couple of weeks, we're going to be doing some piece things of the new menu. Really great staff, we'll have the favorites that everybody likes, the entrees apparently can't go away, so we'll be keeping those, we're adding on some, some really high-end stuff to match with the wines, but we'll have it also community-based so you can bring your family there and eat without having to take out a mortgage or anything. Great staff, friendly service, really looking forward to working in the community here. Any questions, anybody have?
Oh, thank you, Ron, for investing in, and your orders invested in our community and have a vision for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, our presentation is economic development report. Mr. Melkey.
I think there's a presentation coming, so there we go. Mr. Rayner, members of the council, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I'm Todd Melkey, I'm the CEO at Rayner Spokane Incorporated. We are a business development organization that resulted from the merger of the Spokane Regional Chamber of Commerce and the Spokane Area EDC back in 2007. With me this evening is Stan Key, I will have him available as well to talk about one of the things that we do with regard to existing businesses in the area, entry, retention, and expansion. One of the things I wanted to do is, first of all, I, one of the things that we've changed here this year is hopefully all of you are now on a distribution list to get a monthly economic development report. It's emailed out to all of the local elected officials who partner with GSI, as well as your key staff members that are involved in development and economic development as well. Please take the time to do that, you'll see a lot of different activities going on. If you have questions about anything that you see in there, if anything doesn't make sense, this is one of those, those constantly improving dynamic documents that we want to make sure that it's useful and informative to all those that read it. So, so we'll continue to put that up again on a monthly basis to make sure you know what's going on. One of the things that we've done since I've been at GSI is to kind of reshape the whole discussion about economic development. When I arrived, most people would tell you that economic development was only recruiting businesses from outside the area to come here. And that works fine for, for those people that are looking for that type of economic development and those businesses. It does not work well for businesses that are already here asking, what are you doing for us? for us? And the other thing that we recognize is the number one question that we get for businesses expanding, for businesses relocating, is talk to me about the talent you have in your community. We're in this hyper competitive environment across the nation where everyone's looking for employees, quality talent. And as baby boomers retire, the baby boomers at the biggest part, the peak of that generation, will outnumber the millennials when they reach their peak. And so we will not have enough people across this nation to back to those positions. So we're competing against every other community to bring talent here. And now, it used to be when I graduated from college, employees would follow the businesses. We knew we were going to probably move somewhere to go to work for a company. More and more, you see companies going where they can find the talent pool. And sometimes that means moving the entire company. Sometimes that means opening up new locations to be able to do that. So we reconfigured the discussion on economic development. This graphic, I think, describes it best. We take a holistic view to this, so recruitment is just one of seven steps. But the way that, that we take a look at this is if you take a look at the bottom, the bottom three boxes, we believe those are foundational. That no matter what sector you're going after in economic development, if you don't have those in place in your community, you're not going to do very well. And so the achieve box is really about talent. And we partner with all of our K through twelve superintendents, school districts in the area. We partner with higher education and we partner with employers. I'll come back to that here in a minute. Advocate is, I grew up, I spent most of my professional life in and around politics. Perception is reality and that there's a perception that businesses cannot be successful in your community, they're not coming, they're not investing, they're not expanding. And so, so we have a number of jurisdictions that are in this community, in this region. Some of you do very well at assuring businesses that can be successful in your communities. Others, we work with a little bit more to try to make sure that they're sending that right message. And build this infrastructure, which is, we don't want to fall into the same traps that large metropolitan areas do. We need to make sure housing is available for people when they come, they come to this community. We need to make sure that schools are here and they're good, that they have class space available for students. We need to make sure that our transportation systems move people and product in an efficient way and we don't have the same problems that large metropolitan areas have. The boxes on top are really the different phases of where our business is in its development, whether it be startup, expansion, retention, or recruitment. So that's the holistic look that we take based on the resources that we have available to us. Let me remind myself what the next slide is. So as we go through this and we talk about the foundational ones, with regard to education, what's our goal? Every community is measured by education attainment. And here's what that means. They want to know what percentage of your workforce has something more than a high school diploma. And that can be a two-year certificate, it can be to a two-year degree, it can be a four-year degree or more. But that's how you measure talent in the community. The national average is about forty percent. We're a tick above that, we're just below forty-two percent. Our goal is to get to sixty percent by 2025. And so we're doing a number of things to do that. We're engaged with the K through twelve system. We are hosting forty different site visits for three hours during the school year where more than four hundred students from all the different school districts go to different employers to kind of figure out what they might want to do. And so whether it's healthcare, whether it's engineering, whether it's manufacturing, we do a thing called business after school, where we're working with school districts to take kids in middle school to kind of figure out what do they think they want to do when they get older. And so, so that's a big piece of it. We do teaching the teachers, which makes sure the teachers that are teaching our kids are up, up to speed on what the latest, greatest technologies are. But we also have an innovative program we started a year ago for working adults that may have started a program, starters that didn't finish, and it's called Greater Minds. And so we're talking to businesses and they're saying, how do I keep my employees? I'm struggling to keep them, I'm struggling to recruit them. And we're telling them that they need to invest in the, in the professional development of their employees. So we're going in, employers are inviting us in, we're meeting with their employees, and we're helping people go back to school and finish that certificate or degree. We started this just a little over a year ago and with this partnership, we have now more than four hundred and fifty adults, working adults, that are working to go back to school, finish their certificate, finish their degree. It raises the standard of living in the community, it raises average household income, it positions them well for future promotions within the company. So that's what we're doing in our education system, very robust. That last one I described is a national law getting attention all over the country as well as the business after school. The, when we talk about some of the other programs, we are the front door for entrepreneurs in this community, in this region. So when somebody has an idea and doesn't know what to do with it, they come to our Startup Spokane program and we connect them, assist them with everything from writing their business plan, helping them find initial seed capital, connecting them with mentors, and putting on a lot of classes on how to run a business for people who have this idea, they want to pursue their dream, but really have no formal training and how to do that. And so we continue, we continue to see those numbers increase and we only started this in 2015 and so far we've assisted more than seven hundred entrepreneurs get started and end up enrolled. And you'll have more detailed information in the reports that we just handed out. With regard to business retention and expansion, and I think I'll ask Stan to come up and join me, this slide really does a couple of things. The way that we help existing businesses is, we certainly help them with regulatory issues, but the other thing that we do is, is there is a big market in government contracting. So there's a number of businesses where we assist them to become eligible to bid on government contracts. We help them assemble their contract documents, help them figure out how they can track what opportunities are available. And so, so we continue to help a number of companies, like I say, create that additional customer base through that. So you see some of the activity there. But we also go out and we meet with businesses every month in a variety of different sectors to talk about what it would take for them to expand, make sure that they're comfortable with everything going on. If we're out recruiting businesses to come to our community, I will guarantee you other communities are recruiting our businesses as well. And so we want to make sure that we are steadfast in supporting businesses in their expansion mode, where we create more jobs in the recruit mode and we make sure that we're looking for opportunities to help them. And so, one of the terms sort of Stan, maybe you talk a little bit about some of his work there and maybe some of the dialogues he's having with businesses out in this area.
Yeah, as Todd mentioned, we haven't given up on any recruitment, but we understand that for thirty years of being in the economic development field, that ninety-five percent or more of your growth comes from people who are already here. So I go out and I deal primarily with the manufacturers in town. Last year, I met with a hundred and twenty different companies across Spokane region, throughout Spokane County, several of those here in Liberty Lake, Altech, Proto Technologies, Franken USA, and Acrophat was a big one we worked with along with the mayor and others to make sure they didn't move over to Idaho when they were looking to do that. And we went out and got some grants to help them make the decision to stay right here in Liberty Lake. Currently, I'm working with a company who's expanding rapidly and looking for new space and I feel like they're going to end up locating here in Liberty Lake. Can't mention the name right now, but that's moving forward enough that I'm fairly comfortable we will have a new business in town shortly.
And so one of the things that we do see is with regard to the new tax bill at the federal level. So that, with regard to Congress actually adopting a budget with some predictability as opposed to a continuing resolution, with regard to as an after, after effect of the tax bill, more companies pushing up bonuses, all those things going on, what we're seeing is we're seeing companies investing now more in plant upgrades, equipment upgrades, and expansion than ever before. So we have a number of existing businesses. And right now, we're at the longest, let's say, the period in our history where plants have some of the oldest equipment in stock right now. And so there's a great desire to go ahead and replace that and upgrade it. And so we do have a number of businesses that are saying, I'm ready to expand. I need another forty thousand spread week. Can you help me find the space? The challenging thing for us is they typically want existing buildings and it's getting harder and harder to find vacant existing buildings for a lot of different reasons. And so, so those are the requests that we're getting. We're getting them from, let's say, the businesses, we're getting them from commercial realtors representing those businesses. And so that's where we're seeing a lot of our requests for information here. With regard to recruitment, a couple of things, we're always working the pipeline, trying to make sure that this happens. We currently have a hundred and twenty-two in our pipeline. As you see in this, we, we do define them as level three, two, and one. If they're below a level three, all it means is we know they're expanding, but we have no idea if they're looking at this region in the northwest or anything like that. Once they start requesting information from us, we move them to a level three and start that dance, start that dialogue, once they actually want to come and visit the community. And sometimes they do it without us knowing, just to kind of sneak pretty with. Other times, when we do know they're coming, we try to put on the best song and dance that we can, depending on what type of business it is and who we think the key audiences are during that time. And then once we're down to the finalists, that's a level one for us and where we are. So how do we build our pipeline and what are the industries we're looking at? So advanced manufacturing, which is a strong forte of this community. We continue to see interest coming out of Colorado, Utah, Oregon, Arizona, Montana, New Mexico. Aerospace is primarily the huge sound area where logistically, they're just struggling to move their product from their, you know, get product from their suppliers, remove their product to their customers, as well as getting their employees to and from the workplace. Information tech, we're getting a lot from Arizona, Colorado, Utah. There's a significant exodus in IT out of California right now in some manufacturing. And so primarily, they're looking at Arizona and Texas. We need to get them a little bit further north. And then life sciences is a bigger audience altogether because there's so many pockets of that. But we do go to trade shows. We've been to six of them this year and try to develop leads, try to figure out, you know, we've got a whole industry that's concentrated in one area. You want to find out who's expanding and if they're looking at expanding in the northwest. And yeah, I'm thinking about Seattle, say, why would you do that? You know, and let me give you all the reasons why you shouldn't work at Spokane or at Seattle, but you should be looking at Spokane. And then Boeing has announced an aircraft that they want to pursue to replace the seven fifty-seven, called the NMA, the new mid-sized aircraft. So not overly creative on their acronyms, but, but we are actively engaged in that, making sure that they're looking at Washington State and if they've got logistical issues for their app capacity in Renton and Everett, that they'll begin looking at Spokane as well. So those are the things that we're looking at on the recruitment. Other tools that we're using in the recruitment is we send out a, every other month, we send out a newsletter called Advantage Spokane. I will have to double check to see if you guys are on that distribution list. They are meant to be short and simple. The target audience are site selectors who represent these businesses. They don't want a book, they don't want a magazine, they don't want to know about every ribbon cutting, they want the big stuff in a one pager. So give them the, the top four issues or five issues that are going on here in the community. The open rate is kind of interesting. It's how many people when you send them this stuff actually open the file? The, the average is probably sixteen to eighteen percent. So when we send this out, our database is five thousand site selectors across the nation. When we send it out, we're getting open rates above and beyond what most other communities in the same business are getting. The clicks are, once they get to the, and open the website, how many clicks are they, are they going, where are they going to go, other places? But what we find in our newsletter, they don't have to click to go anywhere else, all they have to do is scroll to get the data. So, so that's a little bit misleading. We also have a website called Advantage Spokane geared towards external audiences. We have about twenty-three hundred unique monthly visitors and then we can track where they go. We have a set of forensics that go with this, this website. So we can actually tell who's on our website. And so it tells us the server, it doesn't give us the exact email address. So if we go to a life science conference and suddenly we see Visor on our website and we see Johnson &amp; Johnson and all the others, we know how many times they're on our website. We just can't track down the exact email address. But that leads us to start calling those companies and developing those leads. So, so that's an important tool for us with regard to those analytics that go with that. And there's a breakdown of what that looks like. With regard to project wins, there are a number of them that we've been able to close in 2018. So you have a list there. And we had a couple that were lost. Plug and Play was an accelerator out of California that is looking to help businesses that scale very rapidly, but at this point, they're already expanding internationally. There's just, they had too many expansion projects in the queue. Element Six was a company that we competed for. They do, it's not the right word, fake diamonds, synthetic diamonds, but they're, for industrial purposes. And, but their market is primarily overseas. So they wanted to be someplace that they could have a direct flight to China in some of the other overseas markets. They chose Portland and we tried to convince them that they could actually get on a plane in Spokane and get through security faster in Portland to get to China than they could driving across, they're literally located on the opposite side of the valley of Portland. So they got to drive all the way through to get to the airport and then go through security. It's like you just spent three and a half hours and she'll never get back. So, but we lost them unfortunately, just because that's in their, in their head, in their mind. So a couple of just, I want to leave you with a couple of upcoming key economic development initiatives that we're pursuing. So first of all, I hope you will reserve this date on your calendar. September twenty-seventh is our, the date of our annual meeting. But, and we have a futurist named Rebecca Ryan coming in and she focuses on two things. One is what she believes businesses need to know in preparing for changing demographics, changing marketplaces, and how they should be preparing for that. In the afternoon, we're putting on a separate session just for the municipalities in this area. So we're inviting elected officials, we're inviting any staff that you find, they believe would, would find use in this. And she will focus on what she believes the emerging trends are that municipalities need to face as they think about their long-term planning. So that'll be the afternoon of September twenty-seventh. I hope you'll be able to put it on your calendars and reserve that, that time. It's afternoon. I think it's two o'clock. We'll get that back out, but for now, just reserve like two to four in the afternoon. We'll be building the. I'll just take a whole day off. Just to make sure. There you go. So the other thing that we're working on is the Advantage Spokane website. And I mentioned, I mentioned that this is a site geared towards external audiences. We are in the process of wanting to rebuild this and I'm going to come back and talk to you more about this, I hope. But I want to change this website in such a way that we can incorporate you as partners in a better way. And so part of this means, right now, we have some jurisdictions that are creating their own websites, their own information in this region. And I think what happens is we send signals to external audiences. Everybody's updating their information at different timeframes and those kinds of things. And so we're pushing to have one regional economic development website that's collaborative in nature, that gives the regional demographics to these external audiences. But what's, we don't have today that I want on this one, is I want the ability on the front page for them to be able to click and say, I want more information about Liberty Lake. And so it'll take you to a separate page and then you would be responsible for figuring out what content you would want to populate that. Spokane International Airport would have its own link as well, so that if you want to know how many direct flights can be in and out, which is a major decision for a lot of companies, can I have access to my customers and my suppliers, they would have it as well. So what we're asking is that number one, you would use the Advantage Spokane website and your marketing materials, but at the same time, in exchange for that, we would create these direct links. So we're just starting to prop this up. We're just starting to get some estimates of what this takes to rebuild this on a regional basis and put in all the bells and whistles so that it's advantageous to our partners. And so I believe this team is going to be designated to participate in a work group that helps put that together and get some bids on the technical side. And it's all based on how many bells and whistles you want as far as cost. The, the last thing that I'm going to mention is actually a tiny Advantage Spokane, which is if you're driving all this traffic to the website, every one of our partners, including you guys, want to know, well, who's going to the website and what are we doing with it? And so we have tried in the past in this region to have an advisory group for economic development and it hasn't done really well. It hasn't had a clear agenda put forth of what the meetings are supposed to accomplish, not a clear idea of who should be participating. And so what I'd like to do is I'd like to make another stat, another run at it, where we create a regional economic development alliance. These would be the people who are on the ground, working day to day in economic development. They're your planners, they're your, your utility people, those, those kinds of folks. I haven't figured out how often we would meet, but basically we would get together and we'd go through the forensics on the website. We would sit down and periodically go through and, and have regional economists come in and talk to us about which sectors are growing, which ones are shrinking, all of those kinds of things that go into this, so that we're having a regional dialogue about companies that we're going after or industries we're going after, as well as those that are looking at us and figuring out how, how to put our best foot forward. So it really is an attempt to make sure that we bring all of our partners together, that we are collaborative, and that we're working at the same goal. I know that some people say, well, I don't win unless they live in my neighborhood and they, they work in my neighborhood. And all you have to do is go to I'm like at four thirty in the afternoon or at seven thirty in the morning and realize our population moves around. And we may live in one part of the community, we may work in another part, we may recreate somewhere else, do entertainment somewhere else, but the thing is, is to the extent that we can plan these things out and really make this a great community for those who already live here, as well as those that want to come, I think it's to our advantage. So those are some of the things that we're working on. Again, I want to thank you very much for the partnership that we have with you. You are one of the easiest communities for us to market. You are one of the easiest communities for us to market, just based on what you've done in the past, based on the thoughtfulness that you put into your community. Like I say, it's very attractive for people who want to live here. It's very attractive to people who want to know what schools are served in this, serve this area, and every other facet. So you are one of the easiest communities we have to work with. So thank you very much for taking that. So, yes.
Todd, I, like I have, is trying to shop locally with the businesses, and I talk to the business owners. And if you can let me know if you have some free time in the next week, I'd like to sit down with you and hear some feedback that I've got--
Absolutely.
--on some of the business that are part of what you guys--
Absolutely. And just to that point, there are a couple of other, at least one other organization that's kind of popped up. So nationally, there was a Main Street USA effort. And it was really about, you know, trying to buy local. And since then, there's been some spinoffs from the Main Street USA initiative under a variety of other names, that have actually kind of tightened up. And what they're saying is, we don't believe in corporations, we don't believe in franchises, and so we're not going to do business with any of them. Well, a lot of your franchisers are local business people that just said, okay, I'm going to get a talk with our franchise. And so we want to be very careful about that, that we recognize that a number of those businesses may fly national labels, but the ownership and the employees and all that are here local. So let's have that discussion. Let me follow up with you and see if you can buy the time.
Great. Perfect. Todd, appreciate you being here tonight. And one of the things I love here is how we can better leverage you guys, especially through the Advantage Spokane website. Are there other ways that you think, knowing we've built a background on this, is one of our concerns that we've identified as a council is we need to bring in more retail-type businesses to broaden our sales tax base--
Right.
--in particular. How can we better leverage you guys? Because that's why CTSI is the leverage point for us.
Right. So the one thing I will say is, you've got one of the best retail sources, you've got a couple of them. And so the biggest drivers of retail taxes on the revenue side for jurisdictions are vehicle sales. And so, you know, while we may have auto malls along Sprague and things like that in the valley, certainly, I think you guys have a potential with regard to recreational vehicles. And so that's a great thing. It's one of those major categories. The other major categories are Walmarts and Costcos. And so they get to a point where they're trying to evaluate what their business model is. You see the Costco up on North Division now moving, having moved further north, because their business plan over the years was, first of all, five acres, and then it went to eight acres, and then it went to twelve, and now they're at a fifteen to twenty acre target for their sites. But both Costcos and Walmarts are big generators of sales tax revenues. The other one are home improvement stores. And so you've got your Home Depot out here that I think is one of the larger ones in the region. And so those are the big ones that really draw. I don't know what the history or the future, excuse me, is of bringing more retail stores as more and more people are buying online. And so that's one. Perhaps Rebecca Ryan in the future is going to give us some idea of what that looks like. But I think that's one that the industry itself is struggling with what their future looks like. And I would say, as a municipality, you know, the last thing that you want is a great big retail box to establish, and then have it go out two years ago, and then have a big vacant building sitting there. So I wish, I hope that more clarity comes with regard to some of the--
Todd, could you summarize some of GSI's high-level objectives for the upcoming legislative session? I really appreciate your work, for example, as the Olympic Fly-In--
Right.
--gathering up local electeds and objectives from business owners. But what do we look forward to in the coming season?
You bet. So thank you for mentioning that. We do have a very robust public policy element. It's one of the things that, you know, GSI, as the chamber, has been around since the 1890s, and it's always been public policy primarily at the national level is really where it started. So we are active at three different levels. We are active at the federal level. We retain KNL Gates to represent us there. And so we're doing a lot of stuff in the area of education and workforce. The other one is Fairchild Air Force Base. We worked extremely hard in the last year. It is a major driver of this economy. It's about, I guess, the largest single-site employer in all of eastern Washington, northeast Oregon, northern Idaho, western Montana. More than 6,000 employees, both active duty and civilian, and that number's going to increase by about another 1,500. One of the things that we wanted to do with Fairchild, to make sure that it was one of the largest tanker bases west of the Mississippi, especially as the competition for new tankers came out. We lobbied hard. Last summer, the Air Force announced that we're not going to get the KC-46, the new one, but of their fleet of 475 tankers, so only 175 of them will be KC-46s, the rest will be KC-135s. And so we said, how do we become the largest tanker base west of the Mississippi? Instead, they said, I'll tell you what, we're going to make you the largest tanker base, not only in the United States, but in the world. And so as those new 46s come out, we will have more 135s transferring to Fairchild. And so we will have a fleet of about 62 aircraft, as well as all the maintenance staff that goes with those. So that's what we're doing at the federal level, a lot of those things. Right now, a lot of international trade issues at the federal level. We're the agricultural hub. Our egg producers are extremely worried that once they lose a market, it's going to take them years to get it back, whether it's cherries or apples or anything else. The other thing that we have is we have a couple of companies in the steel and aluminum business that are greatly impacted by the Russian steel embargo. And so, like I say, a major market for us. So that's the federal level of KNL Gates. At the state level, I would say that a lot of what we're looking at is additional infrastructure. The North Spokane Quarter, we want to make sure that it stays on track. We're just now getting to the point where activity is beginning to escalate. That was a six-to-eight year transportation plan that didn't see a lot of activity the first three years, that's supposed to kick in and escalate. So we want to make sure that projects that might be over budget somewhere else in the state, don't eye that as a target for funding. So that's going to be an important one for us. It is the long legislative session. I think there's going to be a lot in higher education. So I think they finally, after years, believe that they have addressed KT-12 education and can move on and look at other things. So I think higher education is going to be a target. Transportation on anything new, but maintaining infrastructure investment. Mental health will continue to be a hot issue in the state because western state hospitals now look decertified. And so what does that mean with regard to people who can't get mental health services who are in our communities? That's a critical issue. So those are some of them, just to kind of top the list.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Todd.
All right. Thank you guys very much, and thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you.
With the reports, so, the reports, so, we have our Parks and Arts Commission people here, we have our library board. Who wants to jump in first?
Yep.
Yes. Hi, everybody. First off, I'd like to take your time, highlight two items. One, it builds off of what Pamela talked to you about in her workshop. If you can remember from about half an hour, or I'm sure you can, that Pamela talked about having a book that the community would be reading. Does that recollect? Okay. In other words, we call it Pamela Picks. And in respect and honor for our library director, this is something that she will honor us with in picking a book for our community to read as time goes on, and she's basking in the sunshine and we're in, and your hard work. So this is something that will continue. Okay, so we start talking about that. Then, as an offshoot of that, we get a, got an email from City Council member Dan Dunn. And he had an idea. He was somewhere, happened to notice something, so he decided there might be a little project there for the library to get involved with. So, Dan, do you want to kind of set the stage there?
Well, the American Library Association has a campaign for literacy, which includes celebrity posters, images of, you know, obviously pop music and actors holding their favorite book in a decorative kind of photoshopped poster with the word "read" simply, introducing the name of the character. And it's kind of fun. It, you know, shows that people, say, people that have a common face, and you kind of get an insight into what they enjoy reading. And a spinoff of that, a good friend who works with Gonzaga University's libraries had spun this up for the staff and faculty of Gonzaga University. So as wall art in the administrative hallways of the library, they have posters of who are professors and library staff standing there, holding their favorite book, you know, kind of an arty and decorative Photoshop background, simply with the words "read" in a decorative word. And so I just thought this was totally cool, because it brings into context of community this really important objective, you know? Get out there and read, and enjoy reading. And so I'm thinking, wow, imagine in the context of our community. And think of, you know, like having like, I don't know, maybe the chief of police, a book that he enjoys, and simply the word "read," that would decorate the walls of, gosh, our city hall and our libraries, of course, and maybe even those, now those four or five schools that we have in our community, just as an effort to try and, you know, yeah, promote that literacy. It's a good thing.
Exactly. So that went from Pamela to the email to Pamela, and then to the library board. We started discussing it. Carol John said, I'll be in charge of it. And now we are ready to look into all the details of investigating and going forward. Of course, there would be, our concept would be, community leaders, both elected, volunteer, from different ports in the storm and different parts of the community. And then a picture would be of them with their, like Dan said, their favorite book. One of the things we've thought about to initially, to start off, we would, they would be eleven-by-seventeen pictures, and there would be, we'd start off with ten. They might be posted here, they might be in the library, and it will grow in and of itself. Collective picture of city council, each with their favorite book, or individual pictures, whatever we end up going with. We'll keep you posted, but somewhere, somehow, some way, we hope that city council will support it and put their faces with their book, with a comment that we did. Non?
We're, 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 we like to be posted somewhere.
Help one it, or-- The process has continued, and we've come to some conclusions, and harmed the library director. The library board met, interviewed, and we have found a fine new team member. We really have. We recommended to Steve. Steve interviewed Liam Lee. And Steve, any comments at this point?
We had a very successful interview, RJ and, there we go. Had a very successful interview with Justin, RJ, and Pamela, myself. She, she's got big shoes to fill on Pamela's retirement, but she's energetic, dynamic, full of all, all sorts of ideas. And really, very willing to reach out and understand what our needs are, and how she can integrate our library within a number of other regional libraries, so that we're just one great big source of information. She's just a dynamic. And I know we've really enjoyed Jandy, she's our children's librarian. And Justin is a J. And with the two of those guys working together, I mean, hang on to your hats and your seats, because it went for a ride. And so we've offered her a job, and she's accepted it. And so she will start--
October.
October.
October 15th.
October 15th, soon. The J&amp;J crew is--
Some people think J&amp;J is Jimmy John's, but in liberalized--
Anyway, thank you, guys. It was a great recommendation. I know you interviewed how many people, 10, 15 people.
It was an exciting thing to do, because we had a foundation of information from our city council, from our staff, and from the community. So building off of that, we asked the questions, we decided who gave us the answers that will enter our community, a person who will be engaging and motivating and will us forward in our library. And Justin will continue, all of it is going so up at our library. And then also Luma, I think you will enjoy working with her. And I see her as just an exemplary team player with a lot of passion for what the purpose of a library. So we have begun discussions in the board about what is essential for her to get started. And once she gets on board, a needs assessment, well done, thoroughly done, professionally done, so that then you know what she, what that assessment has said. So as we go throughout decision-making, we have a foundation of knowledge from a professional needs assessment that says more of this, less of this, and looks to our future. So that would be something we'll be coming back and talking with you more about. Okay? I want--
Thank you. Parks and Art. Parks and Art, right now.
Hi, I'm Natalie Alba. I'm the vice chairman of the youth commission, and we just wanted to give you a quick update of our progress on the commission. Our first event is August 24th. We're having a talent show. So we're really excited about that, because it brings us back to our mission statement, which is to bring everyone together, all the youth in the community together, and make a positive change. So we've already made some progress with that. We've advertised and gotten some donations in already. We've arranged equipment, and we went to all the local businesses and collected donations for prizes. It's five o'clock at the pavilion, and we were really hoping that all of you could come. And we had the idea of having you guys as judges. So, I don't know, but Arte can give me my email, so we can email me your availability. So, yes.
It's black clock, August 24th.
Yeah.
And it's free, right?
Mm-hmm.
Free, so we should show up for free. Sure. That'll be fun.
Good counting it. I'll be there.
Great.
Thank you. Tom?
For the Parks and Art Commission, if I can. Last meeting that we had, we had a discussion about potential funding for the Parks and Art Commission. And that was a percentage of tax coming from the golf courses. And there was a discussion, I think we got to the last meeting, where that topic came up. At our city council meeting, I encouraged for it to be brought to city council, along with other ideas for funding your games program. So I think we look forward to working collaboratively with you guys. But I need to apologize to you guys at the same time. The mayor had told you guys at your last meeting that that funding of that percentage was pretty much a done deal, when in fact, it hasn't even been discussed amongst the council. So I wanted to make that clear, that while we look forward to that conversation, that discussion has not occurred with city council. And we look forward to hearing from you guys different ideas for that funding source. But we want to work together as a group, since we have to make that decision.
You don't have to apologize for me.
Well, somebody needs to.
It brought forth this idea, and we brought it to the council as an idea. The golf tax was created in 2002 to provide for beautification of the city and for the tax to take effect. It was always dedicated for the beautification of the city. And when we talked about the Parks and Art Commission, again, my commitment when we created it was to ensure that we had that input, that they were funded, that they had money to accomplish things, rather than just words and meetings and get nothing done, that this, I think it's 108, or this number 108, I think, existed. And we wanted to amend that so that we could create some kind of ordinance similar to the library board, or library's ordinance, so that they have their funds, they have their say, and they have their direction and input, is what should happen here. And so when we talked at the Parks, the board, we had, I think the lady from Spokane came out. out two meetings ago, or three meetings ago, she talked about a number of different sources of funding. And in this last conversation I had with you, again, promoted the opportunity to utilize some of the funds, golf taxes, because that's what you do.
Mayor, can you turn on your microphone, please? I think there's a power, it somehow went off.
I'm better. So then, those dollars were available for somebody to steward, you know, in a way to make our community better.
It went off again, I'm sorry.
I guess I'll just talk loud. Please. RJ talked about the amount of money that the golf tax throws off. It's about anywhere from seventy-five to eighty, ninety thousand dollars a year. And we looked, and Katie and I had some discussion around how that would be broken out, you know, so that we had some idea. Because one of the things that you have to have when you do an ordinance is have something down on a piece of paper so that you can start the discussion. Otherwise, you just have discussion. And while the golf tax may not be the end all be all, it is one piece of the puzzle. Another piece of the puzzle, I think, is from the discussions that the Parks and Art Board had with STCUs, we were able to get them to donate some money to do the box racks. So you have a golf tax, income stream, you have donations that can be utilized, you have capital donations, people may want to just donate to you. And then expand it even further, you'll start to look at, well, how do we help look at art within our infrastructure investments? For instance, going back to the roundabout that was created over on the north side of the freeway, you know, they put forward a hundred thousand dollars worth of investment in art in that and it went nowhere. You know, and so the goal is to make sure that we have an active body and look at how we can beautify and enhance our community and that they do deserve a funding. Now, if the council chooses not to fund them, that's their choice. But I can tell you, from my perspective, I believe that if you created a Parks and Art Commission, that you expect beautification to happen in this community, you have to fund it. And that's one way you can fund it. And so I don't need anybody apologizing for those comments.
Let me be first speak in strong favor of some sort of funding for the Parks and Arts Commission. I don't know if this is the appropriate way of doing it. I really, I have no idea. One thing I would ask, one, I would love to have a discussion as a council about how to fund or whether to fund the Parks and Arts Commission and to what level. But what I would ask of the Parks and Arts Commission is for them to come to us with some sort of plan or vision for what they believe the city needs from a Parks and Arts standpoint. And I'm gonna just give an example, this may maybe sound like an idiot, because I don't know what you need. But for instance, if there, if you were to, I think, if there's five installments of nice pieces of artwork around the city, and each one of those installments is gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars. Come and tell us that so we know what we're funding or how much money you guys need. My concern is, I believe a budget will always expand to the amount of money you throw at it. And so if we have an idea of what you need, then we can help figure out how to fund that. And maybe through some sort of fundraising mechanism, and maybe crank it straight out of the general fund, maybe that we assign some sort of tax to it. I don't know what the answer is, but I'd rather the Parks and Arts Commission come to us with some sort of presentation on what do you need, and when do you need it, and why do you need it, to the basics. And then, as a council, we can discuss, how do we back you up and fund? I am really excited to back you up and fund whatever we need. I'm passionate about artwork around the community, I believe me strongly. So maybe we can get that on as an agenda item.
Along those lines, I know Jen is here too, so she can add additional information if you need. But one of the things that we thought would really be worthwhile is for the Parks and Arts Commission to put together what we call an annual report of things that they want to fund, everything from fireworks to an event, parks, excuse me, art, all of those things, and then bring it to the council so that you guys are fully aware of the things that they have in mind on their priority list. So that's something that we've talked about. And I think, I don't know if it's in the queue to come forward anytime soon. Jen?
So they're right in the midst of drafting a five-year municipal art plan.
Love it.
So we have a plan, yes. And it would project out the anticipated projects, recommendations for art, programming, events, that kind of thing. So there's a solid something to look forward to over the years and goals of funding those.
Is there maybe a timeline when we might be able to expect this?
Oh, that's right.
I would hope so.
I'll get my parachute.
Some of this ball. Okay, great. Thanks, Jen.
I also would reiterate is that from day one, I've been a big supporter, continually a big supporter of Parks and Art. I've attended every single meeting. I'm able, I'm unique, I can reschedule, my timing, right, I attend a lot of these type of meetings, I don't miss one. But this city operates on a budget. That's what it says, council operates on a budget. We don't operate any other way. Every dime that comes into the city is put into the budget, goes in the general fund, and then from there, we decide and make arrangements where it's gonna go. The police department, we don't go to the police department and say, here's 2.3 million dollars, go out and spend it. We don't go to the library and say, here's 500, something thousand dollars, go out and spend it. What we ask them to do is the same we ask Katie and her staff, is that what is the budget? We don't operate by how much money comes in and then just say, well, we're gonna spend it on this or that. We have to have budgets. And what I want to see from them is a budget. Because I think it's very premature for any of us to promise you X number of dollars when you yourself don't have an idea what your budget is. Now, it's already set up, about fifty-five thousand dollars goes into the parks for specifically art, or not art, what we had this last weekend, Fourth of July, Barefoot in the Park, outstanding events, absolutely outstanding. Those funds go to that. That amount of money is what you have to work with right now. But when I attend meetings and there's nothing about budget, except the last one, and everything is about art, I have to go away and say, okay, it's a council member. How do I work to get you funded? Because I stood up in those meetings and said, one of my goals is to get you funded, but bring to me what that funding is for. I will not support me, my candy saying, I'm gonna give you X number of dollars, go out there and see what you can do with it. I want to see what you need. And we already have the format for that. We have it in, on our functions of this last week, it ran out on the Fourth of July. We know what our expenses are with those type of things, and those are the things you're gonna be dealing with. That's part of the budget. The art is also part of that. But please, if you become offended by a council member who doesn't jump on board and support what you're doing, you gotta understand something. It's our responsibility through the budget. Every organization in the city comes to us with a budget that we have to look at. The mayor is working right now to come up with budgets, budgets, for all these organizations. And we're gonna present it to us, we're gonna discuss it, we're gonna look for, we're gonna get the funding, how, where to do that, and be successful in what we're trying to do. So please, don't start with the cart in front of the horse. Let's start with the budget you need, you already have something you can look at now, and we can move on from there. It makes it a lot easier for us to work for you guys, because that's what we're here for, to work for you guys.
Thank you. And I want to reiterate that I am very excited to find you guys a funding source. Very excited. But don't take what I said that I'm not, because I am. But what people took away from that meeting with that, that that one topic was discussed and that one funding source, is that that's what was gonna happen. And I don't ever want a promise to be made that can't be kept. I don't believe in that, I'll never do it. And I'm excited to have the council discuss how we can help fund your programs.
None? Mr. Noir? Any council members? Put the other big third artist right there. I'm gonna say, I'm sorry for missing a couple of meetings here over the summer. I've got a bunch of schedules, I have a schedule to come, and the last night I had to go out of town, so I'm sorry about that. It was absolutely quite a fall. And I also want to volunteer. Oh, before you leave, I want to leave. I want to volunteer. If you, if you need somebody from the district to be a volunteer, like a reading poster, I have a lot of Lorax, and I've got all kinds of artifacts from Lorax, I've got books, like ten, you know, different languages, different versions. I even have a letter from Dr. Seuss calling you the Lorax lover. I have Lorax, much animal, all over the world, all over Asia and Europe, and send him pictures of it. So if you want to volunteer for the rethink from the district, you need to come pick on it. For the Lorax, for Dr. Seuss, all right? All right. And then one other thing is, Todd mentioned, one of the greatest sources of, you know, tax base for our city is, is like, you know, records of vehicle sales and a lot of those. And I want y'all to know that I did make my contribution this weekend to the city of Liberty Lake. My wife really wanted a recreational vehicle, so this weekend we bought one, and I went there on the highway, and I was like, jeez, that's a lot of tax. Anyway, happy to have made my contribution. Couple things from the district. I'm sorry, what? We thank you. You're right. And I actually am a big fan of taxes. I think that government and society only works because people, you get what you pay for, right? You have to pay and you can get enough. So I'm totally happy with that. Couple things from the district. The east side work is finished up. That was all of the summer, lots of roadwork back in that area. And it's all done now, and we're gonna be approving the final contracts for work on our next meeting on Monday. Also, on Monday, we're gonna have a public meeting, official public meeting, as part of our monthly sewer water meeting on the algae control plant for the lake, if anyone's interested in that. I actually haven't seen the documents yet, so I'm interested to see what they are, but we're still studying and have paid to do a lot of research and data collection before we do anything. And I can tell folks that are interested, this year, as hot as it's been, we have really good flushing in the spring, lots of great rain, lots of snow, melted a lot. And the water is still nice and clear and warm, so get up to the county park or other access points that you like to go to and go enjoy the lake. The work out of the nutrient plant is pretty much done. There's a little bit of work that's been finished up on the lab that's being put together in the old fire station. That'll be done by the beginning of October. And then, we are planning on having some kind of a big opening house, which was gonna be last spring, and then it was gonna be this fall, and now with the work taking a little bit longer, it's probably gonna be next spring. So we'll have some kind of a big community event to let people come and walk through the new facilities and check them out. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Think that artists are ready and ready to go? Kate?
Thank you, Mayor. As Jen comes up, she's gonna show us some great pictures from this weekend, but before she starts, I want to go on record saying that RJ was right with his dashboard. The recap was for a project that we did not make application for, so we need to update the dashboard. But RJ was correct, and that was the figure. And then the other thing, before I, I've got a little bit of back feet here, so maybe he's adjusting it. I did get a letter from, an email, I should say, from Waste Management this afternoon, and the mayor and I will be working with Tammy to figure out what effect it's gonna have on the city. But the essence of it is that the recycling business in the world market has changed significantly. There's, they're proposing a forty-one cents per month, so it's a little under, a little over five dollar adjustment to our bills. And that, I'll look and see whether or not it requires a contract amendment. So now my microphone is off. Nope, it's back on. Is it okay? Anyway, so to cut to the chase, I don't have a lot of information, I just got the email. I'll bring back something at our next meeting so that you have more information on what I just learned this afternoon. And my microphone just turned off again. Pardon me?
New batteries, Diane.
Oh, okay.
Note to South, we need to check the batteries. I think it's low on them.
With that noted, I'll turn it over to Jen.
So thank you all so much, who could attend, for a wonderful weekend. And thank you all for your support for this event. It was quite possibly the funnest Barefoot in the Park that I've experienced, and the least amount of stress. We had a few behind-the-scenes issues come up last minute, but they were handled. And some of the pictures you'll see, pickleball in the park, we had mayor and the council members playing pickleball. We had a small crowd ready to play at nine AM with a complete ribbon cutting, and our staff got to partake for a few minutes and take a break from the play. Thank you so much to our officers for attending, that was amazing, they were awesome. The great support, and this is Katie of the minute. Sorry, Katie.
Yes. Oh, my gosh.
So, it was fun, the pickleballs were probably the biggest hit. This is the dog agility, or the dog demonstrations. We had a variety of everything, a bit of a variety show, all in all. Quanis had an excellent beer garden, they had, I think, three thousand dollars worth of beer sales. Positive feedback, one comment I wanted to share with all of you, I can't tell you how many times I've had moms and dads come up to check out, we had to do wrist bracelets for liability, parents had to sign liability, wherever, and they give a free bracelet for their kids to play on the fun stuff. And I can't tell you how many times the comment was, it's free? It's free? What's the catch? No, it's free, the city sponsors it, this is part of our community event and our community celebration. And I had one mom with two daughters come up towards the end of the day, and she said the same thing, it's free? I said, yes, it's free, yes. Explained it to her, and she said, do you have a thank you box? And I said, no, I don't have a thank you box. Well, who can I thank? And the first I started to say, well, you can go on Facebook, that would be a really good place to say thank you. And I looked over and I saw the mayor and Mrs. Peterson pull up in their home car next to the concession stand. And I saw council member Kaminsky talking to them. I said, as a matter of fact, our council, our council member and our mayor right there, that would be the people to thank. So she walked over and said, thank you. So it was greatly appreciated, a hundred times over. We checked out over seven hundred bracelets for kids, so that's, that's just the kids. And we had to kick kids off a pickleball at nine PM at dark to get the pickleballs blown away. So I think it was the best event we've had yet, and the finest. And again, thank you so very much for your support.
I want to echo your comments. The event was phenomenal, the layout was incredible, your staff worked their tails off the whole entire time. So thank you to the staff for working so hard. John Hape, I know was hot, I was after. It was a really cool event, nothing but positive feedback from family members, people even from out of the area that came to see it, to see how incredible it was. I let some of the kids try on my full vest, and Jen got to try it on herself, and feel how much fifty pounds of weight is on your shoulders. And so it was, the kids got to play in police cars, and it was incredible. We only had a couple lost items, but really, all in all, it was very mild.
No injuries, it went as smoothly as we could hope for. Thank you, and it was really fun.
Thank you, Jen.
Also, what I'd like to say, if I can, is that I really can't give enough kudos to Jen and her crew, because volunteers I have, and I sit there in the booth that I watch in, the one thing that just really shows the quality we have in our employees, the people we have, we have a lot of young people out there working for us. And the thing that I observed that goes unnoticed a lot of times, they actually didn't stand around and waste time so much, they actually were watching the crowds. And when I saw that somebody dropped something, and I saw our employees go over and say, oh, I'm sorry, you dropped this, can I help you? And the thing that was absolutely outstanding is, you know, every Saturday, you volunteer in the booth at the farmer's market. And I can't tell you how impressed I was that we had a police in that event. And why is that? The farmer's market, we get individuals stuck lying, what about this, what about that, what are you doing here, what are you doing there, this type of stuff. The great thing was when you see the kids, because they're our future, and I'll let them repay the social security as long as I can. The great thing was that they come forward and the parents say, oh, here, this is an individual. And I heard mother saying, this is the person, if you need help, that you go to. That was outstanding. That this city gives to citizens is just so...
A couple recruits very cheap, in about sixteen years of their age, but they're excited to be police officers.
One little kid asked about being raised, and I thought, oh, that's the real reason.
Okay, so I think I have a microphone that works now, so I'm gonna keep going down my report. You already received an update on the library director, so I do want to mention in your packets is a copy of our civil engineer project manager recruitment. There is an action...
Couple recruits very cheap in about 16 years of their age. But they're excited to be police officers.
One little kid asked about being raised. And I thought, "Oh, that's where we're being raised."
Okay, so I think I have my phone that works now, so I'm going to keep going down my report. You already received an update on the library director. So I do want to mention in your packets is a copy of our civil engineer project manager recruitment. There is an action for you to approve the job description. The pay scale is actually a little bit less than what's in the budget. So I don't think we will not need a budget amendment, but we are asking that you approve the job description. I know Dennis Scott is very anxious for us to have this recruitment move forward, as is Lisa. So we're working really hard in making that happen. I want to move down to splash pads. So I'm going to touch on two. Pavilion Park Splash Pad, we did have to shut it down and do some maintenance work. There was some standing water in there. It was all taken care of when we opened it back up. Orchard Park, I thought that I would have information every time I thought I'd have an update. The information and the update would change. So I decided I wasn't going to update you until I knew for sure. And I still don't know. The regulatory agencies will be, excuse me, reviewing it tomorrow. We hope for some positive news. But what I do want to mention is that we had to complete a report. Century West, Dennis Fuller from Century West put it together for us. It was submitted to the regulatory agencies. We will get a bill from Dennis. We're going to pay that bill within the contingency of the project. But splash pads and the whole industry is changing. And we got caught kind of in a regulatory nightmare. I won't go through all the details, but we're optimistic that we'll get approval and the splash pad at Pavilion Park or, excuse me, at Orchard Park will move forward. But I won't know for sure until tomorrow. So that's an update on that. I'm going to keep going down. Something I wanted to mention to all of you is that Sean and I are going to be meeting with the Central Valley School District and their attorney. We're going to be talking about two things. One is the North Field. This is the area inside the fence, north of the Liberty Creek Elementary. And we're going to talk to the school district about taking back ownership of that. I don't want it to be a surprise to all of you. I know that there's a strong desire by the school to have a larger recess play area. And just in a general conversation, they've expressed some interest in doing that. So I'm going to be talking to them. I don't have any details. There's nothing for me to report on. We're just beginning that conversation. But I, the other thing I do want to mention is a very strong desire. We need to move on the public works yard. And so we're working on a long-term lease agreement with an option to buy. So as these discussions come forward, my goal is to get something back to you by Labor Day. But at this point, we haven't met, so I can't tell you what that looks like yet.
Katie, did I hear you correctly? You say that you and attorney would go along with, did you get together with their attorney to look at us taking it back?
No. The North Field would be the Central Valley School District taking back ownership of the North Field.
Them, thank you.
So as far as the ownership of it, correct. So I'm going to keep moving down to number five. So on your agenda tonight are two things related to the Harvard Road project. And in the audience is Mary Jensen. She's a project manager from WashDOT. I'll spend just a minute and go over it, but certainly think about the family questions before you vote on it. Mary is here to assist in any kind of response. So basically what these two documents are, one is an inter-agency agreement with WashDOT. There might be a few tweaks on that. If there is, I will bring it back. But in essence, what it says is that Washington State Department of Transportation will give us $800,000. And we are responsible for delivering plans, specs, and estimates for the design of a additional northbound lane on Harvard Road Bridge and also the design associated with an extension of the westbound on-ramp. That, it won't get technical with you, but it includes everything from surveying, geotech work, design layout, traffic control plans, all of that for construction. The schedule for that completion is, I want to say, October, November of 2019. So roughly a year, a little more than a year from now. The, this agreement with WashDOT is unique for the eastern region. I think this is the first one, I think, Mary, you guys have done. Other regions have done them, but we are really excited to have this partnership with WashDOT in moving this project forward. The other thing is the contract with KPFF is for more than $800,000. It's roughly $980,000. So our contribution to this design effort is $180,000. And if, and for any reason the fee goes over, we are also responsible for that. So to cut to the chase, we are responsible for delivering these documents. There is an interaction with the WashDOT over the course of design development so that we check in at 30, 60, and 90%. But this is really, we're really excited to partner with WashDOT on this. And like I said, there's also a contract with KPFF. Now, what changed and why I was a little bit confused about the dashboard, and I'll just cut to the chase on this, is that we were only looking at the widening of the bridge last year. When Mike Grimner came forward and showed you what he was looking at in February, this is the result of that presentation. So I'm going to be, I'm not going to say anything else unless you have a lot of questions. This is also, just so we remember, as we hired the public affair lobbyists to assist us, this is for them to pursue funding for the construction. Right now, the construction of these projects is not, has not been identified. They're roughly combined, they're roughly $8.5 million. Okay, I'm going to keep moving then. Number six, just a reminder, two weeks from today, is that right? Yes. We have our employee appreciation picnic. It's a taco bar menu. It's at Rocky Hill. You're all invited. It starts at 11:30. So I think, Mayor, that concludes my report.
Okay. Kate?
Good question. A while back, it was brought to our attention to bring, to eventually ordinance. I know we did a resolution, but we're trying to coordinate for flood insurance. And we need to get to the point of bringing ordinance. And as I understand it, we need ordinance in place to be able to make that happen.
Yes, that's correct.
So what do we need to do to take that next step?
It's, I actually have been working on it the last two days to bring up the work program. That's something that we've identified.
I'm sorry, Lisa, can you speak up?
I'm sorry. We've identified that as a potential venture project. It will take a little bit of effort to get it into compliance. And it's a little bit more complicated in Washington because it's also critical ordinance. They have to follow the state's requirements and so on. We have to coordinate with that. Because we'll start working on it in the fall, or I mean, in the winter. But it will actually have to be going through as part of our comprehensive plan update next year. So that's why we're thinking, start in winter, get it through next year.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure about that.
Yep. With the changing of staff, it's basically, we're very busy, but we have to drop that. It's still on the work.
Appreciate the effort.
Sean, plug in there.
Thanks, Mayor, and Council. I happened to miss a meeting when Council was wanting to have a little bit of an update. I don't know if we see an update specific with regard to absence. Excusable as well as process for that, so on. All right. So I just put something together real briefly. And to the extent that you have any questions, then we can certainly go through that. So right here is the statute that addresses city council attendance. And that's to the extent of at the top, regarding a council position and if coming vacant after three consecutive meetings without being excused. That's what the state says. There's nothing that's interpreted that as far as case law concerned. So essentially, the state has said to the cities and towns, "We'll leave it to you to address absences and attendance through rules of procedure that you have for a particular jurisdiction." Now, you'll see, and I made a notation there at the bottom, I'm going to make reference to the shall provision. And as we need to know, shall is a mandatory provision. However, just because someone were to have missed three unexcused meetings does not mean they're automatically removed from their position. The council would have to take further action. And that's consistent with MRSC's position that you would have to take a vote in order to remove that individual if they had missed three consecutive meetings. One thing too, and I'll go back here, so you see up there, it says three consecutive regular meetings. So that is a regular meeting. That's the Tuesdays, the first and third Tuesday of every month. So that does not consist of any special meeting. If you were to have two regular meetings and then a special meeting in between and someone was to have missed all three meetings, that would not count as having been three unexcused absences. So what do the rules of procedure for the city of Liberty Lake provide? This is addressed in section 1.4 of the rules of procedure. And that's what it says in the rules. And as you'll see, it mimics or is very similar to what the state statutes provides. In that if you fail to attend three consecutive regular meetings without an excusal, you can potentially be removed from your office. Now, the other thing too, and I underlined that, and that is with regard to a minimum criteria for meeting attendance. This is essentially just a baseline. There are things that are going to arise. We'll get that here in the next, in the next section with regards to what about excuses for missing a meeting. And the rules, not quite an exhaustive list. There's a number of factors that will come into play. But one of the, several of the things that are addressed in the rules are illness, family emergency, or business obligation. Sometimes there'll be situations where a council member is involved in a situation where they're unable to give notice. And so my second point there says an excused absence does not have to occur during the meeting in question. So what that means is, what happens if somebody doesn't have an excusal at a meeting? There's nothing in state law that controls on how an excused absence is to occur, nor does the rule of procedures ban date that an excusal will occur at that particular meeting. So if someone, if a council member were to miss a meeting and it was unexcused, but then later subsequently learned that there was a family emergency and they were unable to give some type of notice, you could take action then to make that, at that next meeting, an excused absence, given the circumstances. So neither in the rules nor in state statutes does it provide that you can't take action at a subsequent meeting as well as MRSC takes the same position. And as I put here, it makes sense, given that's what I said, the circumstances, you may not be able to have provided notice under a particular circumstance. So with regard to notice and procedure, these are the specific language that's contained within the rules of procedure in section 1.4. So it provides that the members are, contact the mayor or the mayor pro tem. Sometimes that may or may not work for circumstances. And I know sometimes they may have contacted Katie or contacted Anne. But essentially, they can work through at least as far as telling the mayor or telling the mayor pro tem.
One of, in relation to this specifically, one of the things that Katie and I have discussed, when that on Friday, or yeah, Friday, was to look at the idea of having the individual that's going to miss, identify myself, the mayor, along with Katie, the city administrator. So that way the bases are covered in case I forget or am not here, to notify you or vice versa with the mayor. Katie knows as well. So that way we're covering it three different points to make sure that.
Sure, and you could certainly amend it to, you know, have it be Katie or even Anne for that matter. She's the one keeping the records before everything.
Yeah, maybe that would be a better option.
You know, it may be easier to, to reach Anne during the day if there's a chance that she may not be able to make a meeting. So we can certainly amend that with regard to.
That way all three of us are notified, or at least two of us are notified. The bases are covered.
Right, right, exactly. And then the city has essentially been following this, this process in bullet point number two with regard to someone may be absent stating their reason. It may not be specific, but I think a lot of times the dialogue will come up that someone has said, when you spoke with Chris, for example, Chris said she had a family or business obligation or any other council member for that matter. And then with regard to the last part, just the majority of the members is what the council's been doing with regard to establishing an excused absence. It says there at the bottom, if the motion's not passed or the vote procedure is not followed, that they'll reflect, reflect rather than an unexcused absence. But keep in mind, that's just talking about with regard to that meeting, that process. It doesn't set a standard for being able to subsequently excuse a council member at a following meeting. With that, those are basically the rules with regard to excusals. If anybody has any questions, I have one more thing after this. But with regard to that, I know it's exhilarating, exciting material. One thing, and one other thing that Katie and I have talked about, which is this next one, which is kind of a separate issue, but I wanted to bring it up to your attention, is there's been an inquiry from a citizen with regard to an ethics committee. And as most of you know, in December of 2016, the city council did pass a COVID ethics. And that's in place under the municipal code. The idea of an ethics committee would be in addition to the code of ethics and would be to address any issues that may arise. So the staff and myself are just in the process of reviewing that. And we'll bring it forward with the council for their consideration and discussion as to whether or not they want to proceed in that direction. But we just wanted to give you information on that and let you know. Any other questions? Kate, is everything wanted out?
So I have a question as far as when you let us know that you're not going to be here. It's always helpful because then we know whether or not we're going to have a quorum. And, you know, we wouldn't want to be surprised at the last minute without knowing that we have a quorum. So I don't know what's best, but it would be nice if we had a consistent person contact, a text, email, a phone call. And so we're thinking maybe Anne would be the best. So if I could indulge all of you, if you're not going to be able to make it, let Anne know right up to 6:59 that you're not going to make it. That we'd really appreciate it.
Is the recommendation only Anne or should we?
It's up to you.
I would recommend two people.
If I may interject, I think what would be appropriate is you'll leave it with the mayor and the mayor pro tem, but also just include Anne additionally with regard to contact.
For the ethics committee, just so the council is aware, as it gets brought to us, this ethics committee would include all the city council members, the mayor, and then any committees as well. So I think commission meeting, or meeting committee, parks and art committee, things to that effect. So it encompasses all those groups.
Not on the committee, but would be addressing those individual committees through the ethics.
Right.
What is the composition of the committee?
We're still working through that process. We don't have specific details at this point. It's a recent inquiry, so we're looking through the details and we'll give that information to you.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ksenogen.
Mayor, move Ksenogen ahead. Two, took her July 24th, 2018, state council minutes. Second approved August 7th, 2018, about the 491,890, maybe percent.
Second. Second, further discussion. I'm here, any hall favors, aye?
Aye.
Mr. Joe.
General business.
Mayor, move general business number one to award bid for trail irrigation to United GLI in an amount of $1,020,380, plus a 10% contingency to be managed by the city staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we moved to second for the discussion. I'm here, any hall favors, aye?
Aye.
Mayor, move general business number two to award bid for the heights overlay to pull asphalt payment of $481,376.10 plus 5% contingency to be managed by the city staff.
Second. Second, discussion?
Yes. The discussion I would like to address with this is that I've had conversations with Katie and I've also had a conversation with the mayor. I appreciate the input you guys have given to me. I understand, you know, we have a roads program, things as well here. But I have to seriously ask the question, is it necessary that that has to be done? And what are the reasons? I understand the parametrics, and we went to them last year, whenever it was, and said, draw a program on how this is going to be done. But my question would be, did we actually ask parametrics or any other engineer organization to say, would you look at our roads and determine what their life span is and when it needs to be done? So what I'm looking for is answers so I can say yes, because I want to be able to maintain the roads. So I keep asking the questions, that is it necessary to have that done? What I'm looking for and hopefully can be supplied, if it is available, that the road that we're in question, is it only going to last two years, three years, four years, or five? And if we spend this money, tear it up and put down a nicer road, is that going to last 30 years? In other words, some justification for me to be able to spend this kind of money versus some of the reasons I've heard of why we have to do it.
Councilmember Katie, I'll take a shot at it and Dennis can weigh in. So first off, the roads that are out there right now, I would not say that they're broken. They're not failed. So I'm not going to say that you need to spend the money today because tomorrow something really bad is going to happen. That is not the case. What we've done successfully here in Liberty Lake is, and we're very fortunate because we have relatively new streets. And I hold this up and I can share it with you if you want. It's basically. It's basically a identification of the different parts of our town and when they were built. Those roads were built in 1975, so they're roughly 45 years old, 43 years old. There was a chip seal done in 2008. We are a community that over the, at least the six years that I've been here, we invest incrementally every year in taking care of our roads, whether it's Valley Way in Mission, it's Setler, it's the Heights. We know also over on, in the River District, the mobile home community, those were built also in, those were built about in the 80s. But we know that, we want, well, we know that as engineers, we want to take care of our streets at an incremental basis so that we don't wait for them to fail, so that then we end up with a bunch of patching that's going to go on. So this has been that overall investment. The other thing is, what I can tell you is that if we do this grind and overlay, so we grind the edges to make the, keep the crown, keep the drainage going, and then put a thin layer overlay over the top, you're probably adding 25 to 30 years to those roads, and you will, we will then, in the out years, and say two or three years down the road when we start tackling other zones in our city, we know that that neighborhood is done and we're not going to have to go back and fix it. What many cities have to do is, they don't have the funds to maintain their streets, and so they either have to wait for them to fail, or they have to go around town putting in patching. So basically, that is what we have not been, that's something we have not been faced with here in Liberty Lake, because our infrastructure is relatively new, we have a source of revenue, and so every year we spend an incremental amount. I call it preservation of an existing asset. Dennis, I'm going to ask you if you want to weigh in on anything, but these roads are not broken as far as being failed, but I will tell you it's just that incremental investment, because as these roads age, we know that it's going to be that continual investment every single year in the, keeping the system. We don't look at, you know, it's the whole transportation system, it's not just individual roads that we're addressing.
Thank you, that's a very good explanation. I guess a big question would still be on, how does that road, do we have a report that shows that two-thirds that needs to be done, or two-thirds that we want to do? Because I don't know if it needs to be done, because you just said it's not broken. How does that compare to other areas in the city? Do we have other areas in the city that takes a priority where we could put that $400,000 and do that the next year or the year after? Because what I'm looking for is really solid reasons, other than, have they ever complained, or some rocks came up on the corner or things of that sort there? Do you understand what I'm trying to do?
I absolutely do, yeah.
I'm trying to make the right decision for our citizens.
Right, yeah.
And not just spend money because of promises or what have you. Are there other streets that take a priority? Do we have a list of that?
So if Andrew was here, he would be able to answer this question, because he did a technical assessment of the deferred maintenance, or what you want to call a pavement management program. I'm not fluent in it, I know that he did it. Dennis and I talked today about using the county. The county has these devices, what are they called?
Road rater.
Road grater.
No, rater.
Rater. They drive around and they actually rate all of the roads that you have and the condition of the roads, as far as what would be the appropriate maintenance on it. I can tell you that it's been done, I have had, Andrew used to, well, he provided me reports, and this was the project that he had lined up for this year. Am I going to say that it's more, more necessary than any other road in Liberty Lake? I'm not going to, because I know the next zone that we're going to head into is the homestead area, just north of Country Vista and south of Mission. That, that's the next area. So he had put that together, and I'm just going off based on what his advice was.
Thank you for your frankness and honesty. I believe that is exactly what I'm taking. What you're saying is that when he, when Andrew was here, that he put together a report. Do we have access to that report? Is it in the files somewhere? Where we could postpone this tonight and look at that to see, does this fall into that category? And I understand there's always a pressure of payee that we have to get it done by a certain date. And I don't do well, and this is not the case, don't get me wrong, I don't do well when something comes down to the wire and suddenly presented to me and say, you have to make a decision now, you have to make a decision now. I don't respond to that, and this is not the case. But if there is a report which gives a pecking order, I think that would be beneficial for the council so we can move ahead on this.
Do you have that?
I have looked, I have heard this before.
I can look to see if I have it. I would guess that he sent it to me electronically, or I have a hard copy of it. Yeah, I think that it was dated probably 2012, 2013.
Okay. I just feel something like that would be advantageous. Now, if the council decides to both move ahead on this, I certainly support, we'll get it, we'll get it done. Those are, I think, legitimate questions. If we don't ask questions like that now, when do we ask those questions? When do, when do we ask the reports to that? Thank you.
Further discussion?
Just some questions, more general questions, I guess, about the length of a road. You said paved in '75, when a road's first paved, how long should it last?
That's a, that's a million dollar question. So there's a lot of factors. If you don't cut into it, and if you don't, and you have a good base, and there's good drainage, okay, so all of those things are optimal. A road, a local access road in eastern Washington should last you 30 years. When you start getting differential settlements because of the base is moving on you, you have, and that generally happens because you have poor drainage, or you have a lot of utility cuts where fiber comes in and then water and sewer come in, and all of those things, those will remove the life forever. So the roads here, we have a base, then we have a top course, the wearing course, but a road, let me also mention something. The road that was out there in 1975, there was nothing wrong with it, it was a good road, it had a good base on it. It was built to county standards back then. When we did the, the chip seal, or the microchip seal, didn't go well. I'm not sure exactly what all happened, but this is hanging on to the base that we have and adding more asphalt to it. So I can tell you that it's at least 30 years. You're adding at least 30 years to the road we have. Because we're not really disrupting the base, we're only, we're adding asphalt on top of an existing road.
And what is, can you explain what chip seal? Chip seal 2008, it didn't go very well, what are those?
Right, so.
What does that mean, how long should that have extended for?
Those are great questions. So a chip seal is where, I will say, counties use chip seal a lot, they're not used in residential areas for a variety of reasons.
I just started with county, we set chip seal on Liberty Lake Road south of Sprague, so not more than six weeks ago they completed that project, you can check it out.
It's, so in a rural environment, they put oil down, they put.
Stone.
Stone down, aggregate they call it, and then they roll it. And it's loose, it tends to be loose. It's really meant for a lot of traffic that can compress it down, because you need that, that road traffic, the car traffic to keep it, I'll say smooth, smooth it out. It doesn't work well in an urban environment because of drainage and because the chip seals, that my understanding in 2008, they didn't have the right ratio between oil and rock, created a problem, and they had to come back and add sand, and that's the roads that are out there today. That's my understanding. Dennis, am I forgetting anything? But chip seals, chip seals, I will say, is not a paved road. It's what we call a light bit or a county road. If you drive out in the county, you'll see light bit roads all over the place.
Katie, I could offer that at that moment, these kids running around on the street would track tar into their parents' house, because it was coming up between the rocks, so it's not really appropriate maintenance process for a residential neighborhood.
And it doesn't, it's not as good with different temperature changes, so we use emulsified asphalt, and so it works better in different temperature ranges. When you use oils, when it gets hot, they get soft, so on and so forth.
How long should the chip seal have extended the life of the road?
Right.
If the chip seal were wearing out now, wherever we're going, okay, we're getting to be a dire need here over the next six months or 12 months.
Well, the primary reason that you don't put it in residential areas is because in the summertime, when people turn it into a driveway, they move that rock. Or when they spin their tires, you'll see a strip, you know, that is gone. So that's why it doesn't work in a residential area. Chip seals ultimately last, they were for five to 10 years. But again, not in a residential area. They're really built for striderways, you know, gentrators, that type of thing, where they just went south of Sprague and did that section there.
I think that gets to what I'm asking, is we're beyond the life of the chip seal, all right? We're pushing the life of what chip seal would be? Even if it was done incorrectly in residential road? I'm not suggesting we redo a chip seal, I'm saying, where's the current chip seal sitting? If you said chip seal's supposed to last 20 years, and I go, well, geez, we're 10 years out, and boy, what's the rush?
So if this was in the county, right, and if this was in the county, they would just come out and do another chip seal on it.
And that's not what I'm asking.
But that, yeah.
What's the life of the current chip seal we have? Fully recognizing, you know, the latest, the proper way of doing it. Thank you for the explanation that's why, why I asked. And so we're also at 42-ish years, maybe 43 years on that road. You're saying it's about a 30-year road?
Right.
So I can see where there's a need, and I am sure some are concerned with Councilmember Kenny, so I'd be, I'd be curious to see some sort of report that shows us, especially in our conversation earlier, that was significantly over budget, the way the bids came back. Is that right? It was, the budget was 300,000?
Right, the budget referred for these two phases was 300,000, the bids came in at 481,000.
Yeah, and I'm right there, we could maintain roads, get them done, get them done well, that's a huge deal to our community, those, including one of these other areas. Great, so I'm a huge advocate, do it, to Councilmember Kenny's point. It'd be nice to have seen why this road, especially if it's significantly over budget, there's a better timing, those sorts of pieces. Why this road right now? I don't feel like I've got quite enough data to understand it. I also might just have to trust the staff and say, sounds great, you can say it, let's do it, but, why this road right now?
So I can go back and look and see what, if anything I have from Andrew, I'm going to tell you it's probably dated. I'm not here to explain it, and nor is Andrew. So this is a project that we've had in our maintenance programs, you know, for several years, and so that's where we are.
I'd like to interject, if I can, as a back in reference to Councilman Moore, I appreciate him asking that question earlier, why is it 100 some odd thousand dollars more? Bob, thank you for asking that, because I didn't have in my notes to ask that. But quite honestly, for me, it is what it is. If we thought it was going to be 300 some odd thousand, or 200 some odd thousand, there's a justification for it. I don't have a charge with that, because it is what it is.
They took it for 80 days.
It just really goes down to, thank you, you're asking the same question.
I know.
Is it, where's the documentation for, where we can do that versus somewhere else? I want to make sure we keep our roads up. We've got the money to do it, it all makes sense. But it has to make sense. Thank you.
I would just like to have, you know, confirmation that this should be our number one maintenance priority in the city. And I'd like to know what the other projects are, and what the urgency is to do this immediately before we act on it. Therefore, I'd like to make a motion that we table this matter.
Okay. Second, we table it? Further discussion? Not here, you all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Name.
Let's table it.
We, I will let you know, Dennis, just let me know that the bids are good for 90 days. They were planning to do it in September, there's some mobilization time. So our goal would bring, would be to bring it back to you next Tuesday, or, excuse me, two weeks from tonight, the next council meeting.
In the interim, I'd like to recommend that all council members take it upon themselves to take the initiative, go out and look at these roads. I appreciate the mayor asking me the question, because even though I brought it up, and actually going out and looking and walking these roads, that was very advantageous to be able to do that. So I certainly encourage the council to be able to do that, just when it comes up again, your feet have hit the ground, and you kind of know what you're going to get.
Mayor move general business number three to approve this court handle with the NFL enter agency cooperative agreement. Not very much to be seen, signed the agreement.
Second. Move to second, discussion? Not here, you all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor move general business number four to approve the interlocal agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation for land funding for the Harvard Road Bridge and Westbound and Andy Onramp Project.
Second.
Move to second, discussion? Not here, you all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go. Close.
Mayor move general business number five, approve consultant agreement with KPFF for the Harvard Bridge and Westbound and Andy Onramp Project.
Second.
Second.
Move to second, discussion?
I'd just like to, oh, the question is, is KPFF the firm that do the estimate on the Orchard Park construction project?
It's BBB.
Okay. This is, this is, I just want to make sure, I think, just checking.
Good question.
Further discussion? Not here, you all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Mayor move general business number six to approve the job description salary range for a civil engineering project.
Second.
Move to second, discussion? Not here, you all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go. First regard, this Anne.
Ordinance number 249, City of Liberty Lake Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, establishing the Harvard Road Bridge Widening Fund and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
Number 247, Deanne.
Ordinance number 247D, City of Liberty Lake Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance amending ordinance number 247 passed by the city council on December 21st, 2017, entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, Adopting a Budget for the Period January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018, Appropriating Funds and Establishing Salary Schedules for Established Positions.
Second, read your ordinance, you have.
Ordinance number 247C, City of Liberty Lake Spokane County, Washington. An ordinance, amending ordinance number 247 passed by the city council on December 21st, 2017, entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, Adopting a Budget for the Period January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018, Appropriating Funds and Establishing Salary Schedules for Established Positions.
Mayor move number, ordinance number 247C.
Second.
Move to seven, further discussion? Any comments from the audience on 247C? Not here, you all in favor, ordinance 247C, where's your right hand? I count six out of six, it's adopted. Here to show upcoming, if you're just.
So I'm going to give you nothing on waste management, I'm going to give you more information on the heights. There'll be a workshop on city development code amendments, the ZAIG agreement RJ will have complete, and then we'll have secondary ordinances on what you just read.
My comment, I commented earlier in the workshop that I would like to see our city's plan as an incentive in your picture.
Okay.
Citizen comments? Last chance.
Watch twice, three times.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. We awarded the bid to flip the stricker system in for the call course. What is the timeframe for that? I didn't hear that, but I feel I asked that question.
Dennis, do you have a timeframe for the irrigation project that's going to happen?
Everybody's already waiting, so as soon as the paperwork gets done, I'll have the research and conference, and we'll have those discussions, but they'll be starting before the end of the office, and probably be out maybe more given next week to do their stake.
Chris is a happy candidate. I'm excited about it.
Jen too, and Jen.